It is six. Six oh two, so we will call the meeting to order. First item on the agenda is roll call.
Nyla Frye.
Here.
Tricia Brown.
Here.
Sam Kaufman.
Here.
Kristen Rungy.
Here.
Anne Moran. Joe Zitzelsberger.
Here.
And Robert McPherson.
Here.
All right, next item on the agenda is confirmation of open meeting compliance.
And I can confirm that the draft agenda was published in the Wanakee Tribune on eleven three. The final agenda was posted in all three official posting locations on eleven two. And the final agenda and packet were made available online on eleven two. Just two important requests for the audience members. Please make sure you sign in on the sign in sheet for accurate record keeping with your name, address, and municipality. And those interested in participating in public comment, please fill out the form prior to the agenda item and hand it to me.
Thanks. All right, and do we have any public comments?
We do, we have one. Linda Ashmore at one fourteen South Street, Wanakee.
Hi, my public comment is related to the proposed budget. Um, I thought it was going to be public hearing, but I think that it's just public comment.
Um, if that's the case, I was going to go through my slides before we did the public comment for the budget.
Okay.
Um, but if you want to make your comment, then I can do the slides after.
It's an ask. The with dealing with the ARPA funds, because those funds, I think you had said were around three hundred thousand dollars. And it's um, use it or lose it by next, it has to be used next year or else the money goes away. Um, and I think as proposals, there was like a hundred and fifty thousand for the splash pad. Um, ten thousand for the chamber and a hundred and some thousand for the, the police station remodel. What I'm asking is that um, out of that ARPA money, I'm not sure, you know, exactly what the numbers are. That you look at maybe putting at ten thousand per WNC, Wanakee Neighborhood Connection, and ten thousand dollars for the food pantry. Um, they had the big move this year, they're still in the process of moving. Uh, they've had extra costs associated with that move. And uh, just looking, I, I want to be clear too, I'm not affiliated with either of those organizations, um, other than to donate to them. But looking at the, the Wanakee Neighborhood Connection website, I was just our Facebook page. I was kind of surprised at how much of a need has increased since twenty twenty. They have a hundred and sixty-two percent increase in the number of um, people served. So that's, that's huge. Uh, I think you had a presentation by the new WNC director here, uh, a month or two ago, whatever. And that there are basically seventeen to twenty-two percent of Wanakee area households are um, they meet the Ellis threshold, and the Ellis threshold is asset limited, income constrained, and employed. So these are people that are working and, you know, they're, they're doing their best, but it's really expensive to live in Wanakee. So it's, it's not a huge ask, it's twenty thousand dollars. I think it's something that um, we're a very compassionate community, and I'd like you to consider that. Thank you.
Thank you, Linda. Any other public comments?
I have no further.
Um, so how are, do you still want me to do the slides? Do you want me to now hold the slides till the next agenda item or till the board discussion of the budget? Um, because yeah, I meant to do the slides then have any budget public comment.
What would you prefer?
Um, I guess we don't know if anybody else might have a comment. Um, so I'd rather maybe do the slides now.
Then let's do that.
In case somebody else wants to join in. Okay, so um, I just wanted to go through these brief slides, kind of um, showing what has changed since our last meeting. Um, and maybe this will inspire a couple other people to make a comment. So in terms of where we're at in the process summary, we're down to the very bottom part about public input. In the first bullet, um, this is the additional um, public feedback, um, non-required public hearing. Um, where we try and get as much feedback from the public as possible, because the public hearing, which will take place on November twentieth, doesn't give us a lot of time to uh, work in changes that might be suggested by the public. So that's where we're at right now. Um, at the last meeting, we had quite a few unknowns, um, and some of those gaps have been filled. And we did, um, for the first time ever, we got our manufacturing in the first um, round of equating, as they call it. Um, so October nineteenth. Um, unfortunately, it was slightly lower than what I had expected. Um, as you know, we did the revaluation this year, and so we expected that um, our assessed value would be very similar to our equalized value. Um, at nearly a hundred percent, but it was, it was quite a bit lower than that, um, more like ninety-three percent. If you remember, the Department of Revenue um, does the assessment for manufacturing, and that's why it comes out so late. So um, that had a little bit of an impact, as we'll see, on um, the, the tax rate. Um, but not terrible. Um, we also found, uh, got the levies from M A T C. Um, their tax levy went up about seven point three nine percent. The school district levy um, was received, theirs went up eight point three nine percent. Um, that doesn't mean that that's what people's tax bills are going to go up, because of course, we did increase our assessed value. So those increases over what they levied last year are spread over more value. Um, but we did get those amounts, and the county is supposed to be adopting their budget perhaps as early as this week. So then we'll have the full picture. Um, well, we still also have to wait for some information from the state, um, but we'll have a pretty good picture. Um, hopefully by the final budget meeting on the twentieth, um, on where everything has ended up. Um, so the tax rate um, just changed very, very slightly. Um, and I think I'm actually going to just jump to um, the dollar impacts. It's a little easier to see um, than just in these percentage graphs. So this um, I shared last time. Um, just focusing on that average value, the, the average village home value, four hundred seventy-eight thousand, one hundred and forty-one. Um, at the last meeting, um, I was showing a fifty-nine dollar increase for that average home. Um, and now we're up to sixty-one dollars. Um, and there's a couple, besides just the manufacturing change, um, there's a couple other things that we changed that helped lead to that. Um, we did move up the Buildings and Facilities Manager from a seven, one start to a, uh, April first start. Um, so that added about twenty-eight thousand to the budget. Uh, we were able to subtract a little bit from the budget or the tax levy. Um, as we got through open enrollment and just looked back through all the, the payroll um, numbers in terms of health insurance and that type of thing. Um, we saved a little bit of money there, well, quite a bit actually, about thirty-four thousand. Um, the dental, um, our um, broker, U S I, they were able to negotiate our um, renewal rate from five point five percent increase down to three percent. So that saved us about three thousand dollars. And then um, in the first round of the budget, I had not factored in any revenue from the utilities for that shared building and facilities manager position. So that adds about eight thousand dollars of revenue for twenty twenty-four. Um, let's talk a little bit about ARPA, and, and Linda had commented here. We did add um, one other suggestion here, um, which was the tree trimming line. Um, but I think it was two years ago, we used some ARPA money to try and catch up on tree trimming throughout the village, and so we're hoping to do that again. Um, we're just getting some final quotes and things for that. Um, and then um, I guess when we get to the budget discussion later in the agenda, you guys can talk about um, uh, Linda's suggestions. Um, I will say that um, Wanakee Neighborhood Connection has not um, used the full amount of what we already had given them. Um, so they have a process, um, and they put in clay, or they have to substantiate. Um, I think we gave them thirty thousand the first time, in the first year of ARPA, and they so far have not um, spent all of that yet. Um, but that was very specific in the requirements, so maybe uh, ten thousand dollars would be more of a general donation to them. Um, in the food pantry, they have claimed uh, everything that they had in their first ask from ARPA. So um, just wanted to add that um, additional information there. And then just a reminder, and I can pull this back up when we get to that agenda item. Um, for every ten thousand we add into the levy, adds a little bit um, to the tax rate and the average home. Um, so I guess just in case anybody had a thought that they want to make a public comment here. Um, this would be the last shot before next meeting.
All right, seeing none, do we have any online?
I don't see any, no, no attendees online, well, one, but it's you for some reason, but that's interesting. Um, also to note that we do have a number of the village department heads are here in the, in the back row and up here with us um, at the staff table to address questions specifically from, from the board or the public, if they have questions for specific department requests.
All right. Thank you, well, seeing no comments on the budget, then let's move on. Thank you very much, Renee, uh, let's move on to the next agenda item, which is the consent agenda. And um, if it's all right, I would like to um, pull item number seven, which is on page fifty-four, and that's the recognition of Native American Heritage Month from the consent agenda.
And I'd like to pull item number four.
All right.
I have questions.
Approved donation of decorative lighting. All right, so do we need motions for that? Or we just pull them? You don't, thank you, Sam. Yeah.
All right, I will move, approve the remainder of the consent agenda.
All right, do we have a second? All right, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, items pass. And then reports next, and then, no? Thank you, it's been a long time. Uh-huh, all right, so let's tackle number uh, seven first, if that's all right. So I'm recognizing Native American Heritage Month and the flying, month and the flying of the Ho-Chunk Nation flag at Village Hall. That's on page fifty-four of your packet, if you are um, keeping up with that. And I would like to start out, if it's all right, by reading our land acknowledgement. Um, as many of you in the audience know, and those of us on the board here, the village worked with the Ho-Chunk Nation to um, create its land acknowledgement. It is Native American Heritage Month this month, and a time where we stop to recognize and what we should be recognizing consistently throughout the year, the um, original inhabitants of the land who are still here. So the village of Wanakee acknowledges that the land we occupy is Tejopee, ancestral territory of the Ho-Chunk Nation, people of the sacred voice. The Ho-Chunk are stewards of these lands and waters since time immemorial. Settlers attempted to forcibly remove them from their homelands by exploiting a series of land cessions and treaties, including the Treaty of eighteen thirty-two. However, the Ho-Chunk resisted these conquests and asserted their sovereignty as a nation. We address this trend of disposition by upholding the Ho-Chunk way of life, sovereign culture, language, and environmental practices. We acknowledge these atrocities, it's only the first step towards reconciliation. Through relationship building, education, and action, the village of Wanakee will advocate for a shared future with the Ho-Chunk Nation. All right, so thank you for allowing me to read that. And then on page fifty-four, um, we do have the motion, would anybody like, would we like to discuss, or would we like to, anybody like to make a motion? To display the flag?
Make a motion um, to authorize the display of the Ho-Chunk Nation flag above Village Hall during November twenty twenty-three in recognition of Native American Heritage Month. Second.
Right, any discussion on the motion? All right, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, thank you very much. Um, item number four.
Okay, I ju, I just wanted some questions clarified pertaining to the permanent decorative lighting. Uh, one of the questions is, we do have an ordinance pertaining to lighting, is uh, this, these, are these lights going to meet that criteria? As far as lumens go?
Uh, yeah, actually, the unit of measure, I believe, is going to be called a foot candle per our ordinance, but yes, it will, the, the lights will be programmable, and they can be programmed such that they're consistent with that section of our code.
Okay, thank you. Another question, um, are these meant to be, the, the lighting supposed to always be used as a single color? Or can different colors be used? The reason I ask that is because I'm thinking of the Fourth of July and red, white, and blue. And um, I, I'm also asking that because of our display of flags and street lighting policy. Um, somewhere, I don't remember where I read it, but it talks about one color lighting. So I was wondering if it's possible to use different colors on this, these lights, and if so, if uh, we need to put something in the display of flags and street lighting policy, so that they, that could be done.
In answer to your first question, um, they are programmable, programmable to the extent that the color can be changed. Um, the rest of your question, I guess I would defer to Sue or Bill on, on the, or, or maybe Brian.
We, we would need to change the policy, because right now the policy is specific to streetlights as opposed to other lights that we control. You certainly have the ability to do that as a board if you want to, but yes, the policy would need to be updated.
Okay, thank you. And, and there, and with these, this new system, they could use more than one at a time, correct? I mean, more than one color at a time. Like, on the peak of the roof, can they be set up to do different colors?
I don't know if I should answer this.
I'm just.
Did I get up and answer that?
Yeah.
This is more, uh, I'm, I was, well, this one. This is more ambient than, yeah, I'm sorry. It is green, thank you. Uh, this is more ambient lighting than decorative. It consists of a LED track, and then a color that matches the fascia to go on there, so you don't see it unless it's on. Most of the time, this will all be warm white when turning on. But uh, it can be pink for breast cancer month, it can be blue for diabetes, it can be purple for Wanakee Home Games. But mostly it's this, Fourth of July, we can change it to uh, that colors, and we can change it to Christmas colors at Christmas. But the control will be in the village center. Nobody else can change it.
Well, I think Nyla's specific question was, can it have multiple colors at one time? Red, white, and blue, for example.
We can have that.
Okay.
And a Christmas assortment, but other than that, you, when you have warm white on, it's just warm white. When you have pink, it's just pink.
Okay, thank you, oh, thank you, and then I have a few other questions. Um, what is the amount of maintenance that this will take, these will take?
Uh, it should last, it's projected to last about ten years.
Okay, is there maintenance in between?
Shouldn't be.
Thank you.
It's a local company, Traditions Lighting, that's going to install them.
Okay, and then um, if a, a community organization wants lighting put up, what will be the process and who will decide whether it's acceptable or not?
Uh, it, they wouldn't put lighting up, they would want to change the color.
Oh, change the color, yes.
They'd have to go through the village center and, and, and you folks.
Okay. Um, oh, and uh, who's, is the village paying the utilities and proximity?
Part of the, it might cost the village twenty-five to fifty cents a night to light these.
Okay, thank you for knowing that. I appreciate that very much. Okay, so um, all my questions are answered, so can I go ahead and make a motion for?
If Ryan has something.
I just wanted to try to clarify what the, to, to, to do the lighting based on a policy, we would need to change the policy. If, if the board, and I'm going to use the football or the sporting event example, if you want the lights to be purple some night, you, you have the ability to do that outside of the policy, and I just want to make, make clear. Or if you want to make, if, if it's possible to have it red, white, and blue for Fourth of July, you don't have to necessarily go through the policy. It's, it's, it's the village's property. So you, as a board, essentially have the authority to dictate those things, if you would like, through, I would say, separate actions that have nothing to do with the existing policy.
Okay, I, I know that uh, they would like to get, or I'm assuming they would like to get these lights up, so I don't want to hold them up with working on a policy tonight. Um, so I would like to make a motion to um, approve the project, the uh, the permanent decorative lighting on the Village Park Main Street shelter in the Village Center.
Second, any discussion on the motion? All in favor? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, um, thank you very much, Phil, for coming to us and talking to us about this, this is very exciting. All right, on to reports, so Senior Services Committee.
Uh, we, we discussed uh, the proposed budget for next year. Um, we also discussed a room rental fee policy, uh, they currently do not have one, and there's some issues with certain groups uh, putting their dibs in for a room rental before uh, the senior center can use them for program.
All right, thank you, Wanakee Fire District.
Uh, the uh, board met uh, last Monday, weird month, uh, and we uh, got previews of, there's going to be an ask for uh, the next uh, fire truck that they want to order. Uh, there's some questions, however, that we could not answer that night uh, about uh, how that's going to be financed. Uh, and so we're awaiting more information uh, on that. And then uh, I know that the RFP process continues to go forward.
Excellent, thank you. Parks and Rec.
We reviewed the uh, new Terrace Tree giveaway program, which was very successful this year with our new Bear Root Nursery. We're going to be continuing that at the same level next year. Um, the third bridge in the Castle Creek Conservancy is in frankly dire uh, condition for safety, so a telehandler is going to need to be used to get behind some of the houses there and install a third bridge. Uh, next year, concrete tee pads are going to be installed at the Rip Park Disc Golf Course, and we also reviewed the park plans for the first phase of Kill Kenny West.
Fantastic, all right, thank you, Public Works.
Public Works met on November second, and uh, we, uh, one of the things that we discussed is there's going to be an informational open house for the Prospect Road Project next year on December seventh. And there will also be a meeting for residents on South Street on December fourteenth pertaining to reconstruction projects. Um, the last week of November is the last day of, it's the twenty-seventh, is the last day of leaf pickup. And, and there may be a little additional time after that, depending on weather. Uh, leaf pickup in twenty twenty-two, it was two hundred and one low, loads, which I thought was an interesting um, uh, data. And, and when you think about mulched leaves, two hundred and one of those big loads that come through and pick them up, that's a lot of leaves. Um, and then I asked, what um, where do the leaves go? I, I, I never asked that question before, and I was glad to learn that um, some of it goes to farmers. If it's dry, the farmers will take it for bedding, and then past that point, it will, it will just deteriorate. Um, if they've spread it on fields or whatever, when they clean out their barns. And if it's wet, it needs to go to the compost, but I was very happy to find out that there's a, farmers in the area who are utilizing it.
Thank you, Nyla. I was always, I've always wondered that myself, so I'm glad you asked it. All right, other committees, Wanaboo met, we welcomed a new member, um, we reviewed a cleanup bid from Two Men and a Truck, a subsidiary of Two Men and a Truck. Um, donations are already rolling in for this coming Fourth of July, and we reviewed um, possible entertainment for children and switching up kind of the activities a little bit. So um, it feels like it's a long way away, and yet here we are planning. Um, any other committees to report on?
Sure, uh, Utilities met two weeks ago, uh, there was discussion about the Division Street Substation, the North Substation, there's some different projects going on there. Uh, we reviewed the budget, we approved um, continuing with the focused on, Focus on Energy Program, and then dealt with some uh, employment compensation type things.
Excellent, all right, and anyone else, any others that we've not had on the agenda? All right, thank you very much, next up, we have a presentation from Wanakee Community High Schools. I'm going to get the name wrong, Ecological.
Environmentally compassionate organization.
Environmentally compassionate organization, there we go. All right, and the Dane County Office of Energy and Climate Change, and I believe Todd or Tim are one of you guys introducing this?
Um, I, I was going to ask whether you wanted to introduce it, since you participated in our, our visit with them, but you don't have to. Um, uh, for the past several months, um, Isaac has approached, actually, this is probably Isaac, two years ago almost now, um, that he approached me about talking it uh, with the village about promoting sustainability and environmental, environmentally friendly measures in our community. Um, at the time, one thing we hadn't done was a, a good thorough review of what we have been doing. If somebody had called me and says, Todd, what are your departments doing? I could maybe think of a couple things off the top of my head, but we hadn't quantified it or sort of audited that, which we did with an intern over the course of the past summer. We've put that information up on our website, so that was step one, to get all that collection of information and know what have we been doing to date. Um, with that, um, Isaac and Kathy from Dane County are here to share a, a presentation and a request of the village for what we might consider doing next uh, in this topic area. So with that, Kathy, I believe you're gonna take it off and out. Yep, I'll let you introduce yourself and your role with the county while I bring up your presentation.
Sure, thanks, so I'm Kathy Kuntz, I'm with the Dane County Office of Energy and Climate Change. And so we're an office inside County Exec Parise's office. Um, I'll pause.
Um, check the button on the side to make sure it's, oh, it just changed.
Yep, it's all good. Um, and really, we focus both on what's going on inside Dane County's operations and also countywide in terms of greening and sustainability. Um, and I thought I would start by giving you just a little bit of a sense of what's going on. These are really exciting times when it comes to clean energy, energy efficiency, sustainability. Um, at the local level, entities in Dane County are making history. You know, the village of Oregon, in their school district, they've got the first net zero energy school in the country. McFarland just opened a net zero energy public safety center. When I say net zero energy, I mean it's a facility that the renewable energy on site generates all the energy needed for the facility over the course of a year. So a really amazing thing, and we've got a bunch of firsts here in Dane County. So a lot is going on locally. At the state level, the state last year issued a clean energy plan for the first time in the history of Wisconsin, so a hundred and fifty years. We have a clean energy plan, which is helping state agencies work together a little bit more collaboratively. And then we've got unprecedented federal funding happening, just, just an enormous amount of money at the federal level to help people make greener choices right now. So really, a lot going on, and, and you know, this is um, making a bigger difference locally, because when you look at our local communities, Dane County is a place where people care about climate action. So Yale University actually tracks this, and they've been tracking it so long, they can track it at the county level. So that's a Yale University map over there, where Dane Car, County is a darker red than all the rest of Wisconsin. And when you look at the Yale data, sort of like, so global warming is happening. Seventy-two percent of Americans nationwide agree with that. In Wisconsin, it's sixty-nine percent, in Dane County, it's eighty percent. Almost every question Yale has, Wisconsin is a little lower than the national numbers, and Dane County is a little higher than the national numbers. So that helps you sort of see why we have maybe as much activity as we have, and there's a lot of activity. So there are fourteen communities at this point in Dane County that have standing sustainability committees. The two that are maybe newest on here are Edgerton and Mount Hora. Both in the last year have set up their committees. And I think it's important to have a context of, so what are these committees doing? Um, often committees start out with some level of benchmarking or goal setting. Todd talked about the work the intern did for you guys. Um, sometimes those committees try to figure out what's our community already doing. You've got a good summary of that already. Then, just like our office looks internally and community-wide, typically, these communities look at internal operations and community-wide things. So for example, in, in And community wide things. So for example, in in Pittsburgh, they spend a lot of time on bike trail issues. Their Sustainability Committee, that's a big issue in Pittsburgh. In Middleton, they spend a lot of time promoting energy efficiency and solar energy and. A few communities are starting to really push the the credits under the Inflation Reduction Act. Mount Hora is doing a lot of that work right now. I don't want to spend a bunch of time on this, but you should know. That there is just an enormous amount of money out there for energy efficiency and renewable energy projects. Whether you are a business or a homeowner or a nonprofit. For the very first time under the Inflation Reduction Act. Schools, local governments and nonprofits can get the credits that businesses have historically gotten. The IRS invented a new thing here that they call elective pay and it's much simpler than a grant and it means that if if. The Wannakee School District puts solar on a building, they could get thirty percent of that cost back from the federal government. As a credit. So really tremendous opportunities there. So we talk a lot about this in our office. Because the numbers are so big. So give you an example, I mentioned McFarland's new public safety building. They spent, they have solar and geothermal there, both of which qualify for the the thirty percent credit. Those systems cost them about three point three five million. So they are gonna file paperwork in the next couple of months with the federal government and they're gonna get back a check. Up to a million dollars on that system. And that's gonna come back into their village budget as a million dollars. No strings attached from the federal government. Kind of a cool thing. They didn't know that was gonna happen when they did the project. So it's like especially karmic for them. Cause they made this big investment and now they're getting this big check back. The thing about these checks though is tax credits go where projects are. So if more projects happen in Dane County, more of that money will flow to Dane County. If less projects happen here, less of that money will flow here. So we're really obsessed with working with folks to make sure that they know they can take advantage of this. We have a bunch of information on our website and we're really interested in working with local governments to make sure that folks are aware of this. You have your own utility here. That could be a great bill insert to talk about some of those federal tax credits for folks. And also for your own facilities. The other opportunity for Wannakee is that that. As Dane County, we coordinate with all of the communities to pursue bigger federal grants. So these are grants that are hard to think about a single community going for. That maybe my best example is we have a pending application to the federal government for fourteen million dollars. To fill holes in our EV charging infrastructure. Okay, that's gonna, you know, be big and have a ton of reporting tied to it and nobody wants to be like doing that on their own. We want to do those things together. And so there's that opportunity too for the village to think about how you're more active. In some of those regional efforts. And with that, I will stop and turn things over to Isaac.
Okay. All right, I am Isaac Drangstedt. I've been a resident of Wannakee for eleven years. Um I'm a senior at the high school, um so I'm seventeen years old. Um I also am a leader of the Dane County Youth Environmental Committee, which is a completely youth um led nonprofit. Uh that works with all of these students around the county. Um at at one point last year, we had a student from every high school, every public high school in the county. Um as a member talking about the environment, what they're doing at their schools, um in their municipalities. Um and I've met many of the student representatives that sit on the committee, on the committees that Kathy was talking about. So I know firsthand what their experiences have been. I'm also the president of the Wannakee Community High School Environmentally Compassionate Org or ECO. Um which we have eighty student members, eighty-three I think now. Um we're mostly focused on educating the student body. This is sort of our first. Um active role um with our government, so that's pretty exciting for us. Um. We host events, events and fundraisers, um hoping to sort of educate the student body on what's going on in our environment. Um because that doesn't always get out there and it's sort of scary for us because our futures will definitely be impacted by the environment. Um so we try to approach it with a a more um calming and sort of uh. Uh sort of, you know, um positive outlook than other um events that go on in the news. Um so. Next I have what is sustainability, um because this is what I'll be talking about a lot. So it's it's sort of an umbrella term for everything in the envi- environment. It's mostly about conserving land, habitat, energy, animals, you know. Um all of the environmental things. I liked up um this graphic because it shows that it's it's involved in the business, it's involved in our government and our environment. Um so we have to be responsible with the environment that we have. Um we're really lucky to live in Wisconsin where we're um pretty sheltered from environmental impacts right now. And we don't have hurricanes and we don't have um enormous heat waves as, I mean, we do, but it's not as to the extremes as Arizona or California. Um so we're sheltered and there will be people coming here, um moving here because we're sheltered. So it's important to think about that um as a community. Um and then, so I'll move on to our background in sustainability like um we were talking about with the report. So Wannakee Utilities um has a lot of great programs that aren't really out in the public yet. Um my family didn't know about them until I met with Tim Herlitska. Um and I I like to think that I'm pretty involved in the environment, but they do green tracking, so they um track how much environmental uh in. How much green energy we're using as a community. Um there's a renewable opt-in, which is a really great program. It's two dollars a month, maybe. A little more than that per household, which switches your energy to be a hundred percent renewable, um without having to put solar on your house. Um which is a pretty cheap investment to know that your energy is coming from a safer source. Um we have lots of parks in our community, um involving restored prairies like Rip. Uh and Bowles Conservancy Conservancy, um which are really nice areas of clean environment, um restored back to what they used to be. We are a tree and bird city, United States of America, so we um acknowledge the role that trees and birds have in our community. Um a lot of other suburban places don't have every tree every sixty feet on the street like we do, um which is a nice, a nice add-on. We can, that supports our housing because it doesn't, it means it's a cooler um house with shade from trees rather than having to pay for that AC bill. Um we have a climate champion business, Zoe's Pizza, because they have completely uh EV vehicles delivering your pizza, which is a really cool one. Um they were just at a Sustain Dane event. We were also a participant in the Dane County Study um in twenty nineteen and twenty twenty, which is seven municipalities. Um thinking about sustainable energy and what kind of energy they're looking at. Um I wanted to mention right now, um we get our energy from WPPI, which um the energy mix, the most recent one that I could find on their website was thirty-three. Point nine percent coal, nineteen point five percent um natural gas, twenty, uh about twenty-one percent nuclear. And then eleven point four percent renewable, which that um includes renewable energy credits. Um which means we're not producing it, we're buying that. And then fourteen point five percent without the REC's. Um so uh I I look at that and I I sort of um, I sort of get a little nervous seeing how much we rely on coal still. Um that is not, that's not really a Wannakee thing because we get it from WPPI, but I think we could really um work with WPPI to maybe get that goal to lower coal. Um because it it will, we'll run out of coal and it's it's a very dirty um kind of energy that we're getting from that. So uh then I'll move on to our sustainability report, which was done this, it was released this summer. It highlighted a lot of the things I've talked about. Um being more, we have lots of these programs that keep us sustainable, the library sol- solar installment. Um LED lights throughout our municipal buildings, um automated HVAC in the village hall or in the village center. Um the intermediate and high schools also have solar, not a hundred percent solar. Um but then they also suggested joining the Dane County Sustainability Leaders Collaborative, which is through Kathy's office. And to create a uh sustainability committee, um like the uh other municipalities we talked about. Um which are right here after this. Um. So this is what a sustainability committee is. This is what I gather from looking at all of the other ones in our um in our, in our county. So I based ours mostly off of um Sun Prairie, Stoughton and Matt Hore, which are all WPPI members. Um so they have, I I about three trustees. I think in the draft that I made that was, that's in your packet tonight. Um shows one, um because I didn't know how many trustees usually sit like on a committee, but then I to- I talked with just our trustee McPherson. And then I would really like to highlight the one student, high school student representative, um because we are, we're, we can't vote yet. So we can't really um directly impact our government. And this will directly impact our futures, our careers, our families, um our education. So we um we, I think it'd be really highly beneficial to have a student on there talking about how um their future will be impacted and how they can safeguard a clean environment. And then five to seven community members, this has worked well for other communities that they can find people that are already working on the environment in their jobs. Um and then the the largest thing that a sustainability committee can't usually does and starts working on fast is um to create a sustainability plan. Which sort of plans in all aspects of the, it's sort of like a comp plan for the, for sustainability. And it promotes green infrastructure and reviews all the plans in the future for the village, um and how it can be more green and environmentally responsible. Um and then supporting businesses, which is a big one, because a lot of the times business owners can be scared about having to pay for renewable. Um uh energy access and putting that on their buildings because it's an investment. Um but this can help them in getting it cheaper and getting it faster and making it easier in the process. Then it can highlight local champions like our pizza restaurant and hopefully incentivize other businesses to become the same. Uh and then it reviews the plans and policies and is more mostly advisory to the village board on what is a good idea for the environment. And just keeps it in mind on on the resolutions that could impact it. And then another big one is lead by demonstrating like um McFarland has and Oregon has in their school and McFarland has on their safety building. Um I think it would be a great goal for Wannakee to work on getting all of our public buildings to net zero, which will take a lot of investment and a lot of time. But leading by demonstrating can show businesses and and how's and um builders. How it's a good idea to stay stay sustainable and get here early on to um safeguard our environment. Um I highlighted out of out of Kathy's map, the three that are WPPI members and in your draft in the packet. Um what I based the resolution that I wrote on. Um so I'm gonna highlight Mount Hore quickly, um because it's the most recent and it's WPPI member and what I think is closest to us in population. And sort of structure because they're also a village. Um so they have a village government similar to us. Um and they also have a new sustainability committee, which also has a student representative from their high school. Um and I've spoken with him, he's really happy to be on that. He feels his voice is heard. Um and that he gets to bring the hi- the school into local government, um and bring what he learns in his classes and what his future will be like. Um a a big thing for us students is where do we end up after college? Where do we, we don't even know where we're going to college. Um but we'd like to come back to a hometown that is safe for the environment and cares about our future. So seeing, being able to bring that back to my school and be proud of what Wannakee is doing for the admire environment, but it would be really powerful. And I I want to come back to Wannakee and be and be proud to come back to my hometown and say, yeah, I live in Wannakee. The one that cares about the environment is being progressive and safeguarding our natural resources. Um they also uh had a pollinator garden and natural lawn ordinances. Um that's one of their accomplishments. Uh they also surveyed nine hundred members of their community on what they think about the environment, sort of their own Yale um study. And then they realized that a lot of people didn't know about the environment. A lot of their residents didn't know um how their local government could change anything. They sort of thought it was in the National Wheelhouse. Um so they um started a campaign and changed the dialogue and did another study. Um and realized that people did learn from that, from the committee being able to get out there and show um what what the, a little town can do. Um then they also joined Soul Smart and are working on a designation from that, which is a federal program to reduce the cost and sort of. Um the bureaucratic tape on getting solar to your community on municipal municipal buildings and um businesses. And they're also working on a sustainability plan, which they're working on getting a grant for um to pay for that because it is sort of uh an investment. Oregon just released their sustainability plan this um August and I spoke with the student representative on that one. And I think they said in total it costs about five to seven thousand dollars um in payment for staffing and and um over two years. So. That was Oregon and Matt Hore. And then, so I looked through, um I read the whole comprehensive plan from twenty seventeen. Um and highlighted each part that uh mentioned the environment and what our goals for that were. So on page forty-six, we had the economic prosperity. It was our goal for. Um and in the shared policies four point two and four point four, we talked about encouraging commercial and industrial developers to be. To uh implement building and site design strategies that limit the use of non-renewable resources and protect the environment. Um I think a sustainability committee could really help um get that out to the businesses and promote um new businesses that are coming in. Uh Middleton is really, really keen on this. They um have been working on. Uh their ordinances are pretty, um they're pretty strict and they're, they're working on getting um businesses that really care about the environment. Um because they want to have a healthier community and they know that their um their community members care about having businesses that also care about the environment. Um and then four point four was um again just saying attracting clean businesses and industries that will not have adverse environmental impacts. Or be incompatible with the character and quality of our community. Um so that was straight from the comprehensive plan. And then we had our agricultural, natural and cultural and historic resources, page forty-seven through fifty. Um there are a bunch of goals, I won't read them because I know we are sort of um cut on time, but there, it's mostly about water. It's about um air agriculture because we are farm town. Um it's it's sort, we're moving towards more uh suburban, but that's, that's sort of our roots. And and promoting um sustainable agriculture is a big one, especially in Wisconsin. Um that land can. Our older practices were pretty tough on the land. Um it 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 impacted the root systems, it impacted our groundwater. Um and just promoting sustainable practices in our agriculture and keeping those small family farms, um rather than big, huge corporate ones that. Um don't always care so much about where their kids are living and and their workers. So. That's another one. And then scenic views, so keeping our our um community pretty to look at, which is another big environmental one. Um and then transportation ones uh that I just added last night, actually when I was reading through it again. It was mostly about um ride shares because we don't have a busing system yet, um but getting people to work by walking and stuff, that can be really helpful. Rather than having one person drive one car per place. Um and then that can reduce parking spaces needed for each building. Um so yeah, that is the comprehensive plan. Um and then I believe the um WCHS ECO sent a letter to the village board. Um and had people sign it, it's in your packets. Um I won't read it all to you right now, but it's just encouraging that our village board. Um implements a sustainability committee with a student representative or two. Um as part of the village government because that we, we believe and working with other communities and speaking with other village trustees from Mount Hore. And Oregon um is the best course of action to keep our environment safe and um in and uh keep our uh future safe. Um I can take questions also now. That was pretty fast.
That was awesome. Uh wow. I and I gotta give uh I I gotta give you kudos for knowing your stuff with all of the other communities. And for reading the comp plan. Uh so just the, you know, this is not something you expect a senior in high school to do is. You know, spend their weekend reading with, or week reading the comp plan. So thank you very much for the very informative presentation. Uh I'd like to open it up for questions or comments from the board first. Yeah.
And I would just note that we don't have this on for board action.
Yes.
This evening, so uh certainly staff will be looking for direction if you'd like us to bring it back in a what form and shape.
All right. And thank you for that.
So I'll go first. Uh and and I met with Isaac as stated, so thank you for uh your time and for helping me to understand what this is about. So uh. My opinion, uh you know, this is a committee that uh we need to have. Uh I I've spoken in the community for years. That I'd like to see improvements to how we handle this, uh starting simple, even with solar panels on roofs uh of of our municipal buildings. So the cons- the concern I have, and this is not a concern with what was presented at all, the concern I have is that if we create this committee. It needs to have some amount of teeth to it, uh because I I think that what we kind of is. I know this is previous boards, but uh the Housing Task Force kind of met, it brought a bunch of community members together for a whole year. And then we didn't, we didn't really do much with it, like a lot that was very visible from it. Um and that's not a, that 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 was not the facilitator's fault that did that. I want to make this very clear. But there was a, but there, the community kind of met and then it was dissolved and eventually the CDA came back, but it took a lot of time for that to happen. This is a, climate is an emergency, it's a now issue and just like housing is. And if we're going to do this, I think that we need to follow the leads of everybody else in the community. We're behind uh the, everybody else in Dane County. So I think that we need to go for this. That's why I suggested three trustees to Isaac when I met with him because the, I don't want this just to be. One trustee who comes and hopefully attends and then comes back here and does something and we need three trustees that are gonna be on there. And we need to, as a board, actually write legislation. And we need to, as a board, actually write legislation, not rely necessarily on staff to do all of the work for us, but to actually bring forth the ideas from this. And then let's have the discussion at a board level rather than waiting uh, months for staff who are busy doing, and we've got what, fifteen other committees, it feels like, or some twelve? So I mean, we have to be cognizant that we can't just offload this onto staff to solve our problems for us on this. So I know I sound a bit dire about this, but I, I, I think it's intentional because we really need to take this seriously and uh, again, there's, there's so much that this touches on, uh, that I know I can't talk about because it's going to go before plant commission, but I mean, you even said it on there. Uh, we, it's in our comp plan, we need to have less parking, things like that. These are all low hanging fruit environmentally and we really need to start taking it seriously. So I, I mean, I would, I'm not saying that we need to take action tonight, but I mean, I would even adopt a lot of what was written in that and, you know, for consideration at the next meeting so we can just get this started.
Right. We've accomplished a lot in that housing, I'm gonna defend that. Yeah, we've done a lot. Tricia.
Uh, so I was going along with, with some of Robert's comments and thank you very much for the presentations. That was great. I love your passion for, for this and moving something forward. My feedback was a little bit more constructive as with the draft and was thinking to have maybe staff go back because I think there's some things in there, to your point of structure and teeth, is just being more intentional, maybe even about uh, different board members, like a representative from the construction industry or somebody from utilities, just being a little bit more prescriptive on what would bring some professional expertise to the conversation as well as kind of advisors. In that regard, because I think there's a lot of creative things that are being done. You mentioned the McPro and um, safety thing. So you know, in our projects, the way we issue RFPs, things that we can be incorporating it, but I think there's, there's some um, just experience that we could lend to the conversation if we're just a little more intentional with it.
All right, Nyla.
Um, I agree with what both Tricia and Robert um, said. I, what I call it is a committee on steroids. I don't want it to take a year to come to a conclusion. I would like to see them meet perhaps even twice a month instead of once a month and hopefully it won't take six months to come up with the committee. Um, once our wet lot lands are gone, they're gone. And there are the sponge that keeps the area from flooding. That's just one of, one of the areas that needs to be looked at. Um, I've been concerned about things for years, um, kind of quiet about it, but I'm so glad that this group has come and give the presentation. It, it, it's, we should have done this years ago. Um, so I'm hoping we can move on it and move on it fast because I want to leave something for my children, my grandchildren and for the future. And I don't want everyone walking around in air masks. And um, you know, the, the negative things that could happen are be fighting over water and people may laugh at those thoughts. But it could be a reality and I hope that that never happens. Thank you.
Was a reality this summer. Yeah. Joe.
Um, I, I guess only a couple of thoughts on this. Uh, first one was uh, as far as tax credits go, I think we need to keep in mind, those are still tax dollars. They're coming through the federal government. There's a whole lot of you know, things that go along with that, but it is still tax dollars. Um, the other thing would be something actually that Tricia mentioned real quick. Um, I think a representative from utilities on here would be um, an excellent concept.
Sam.
Well, the, he's kind of like my younger twin, you know? I like, I feel like I've been replaced a little bit, you know? Uh, no, you notice on the list of communities that have these committees and the largest one that doesn't have one is this one. Let's hit the ground running, let's get this started.
Um, so we came to, to the Madison area as I was talking with you about this when we met Isaac is because my husband left industry and went to lead the Wisconsin Bioenergy Initiative, but now he's part of the Great Lakes Bioenergy Research. Um, and uh, everything on here, yes, I think that we need to be heading in this direction. I share your, like, why aren't we doing this already? Um, so it's now is the time to start. Uh, I agree with um, you that we don't want to have six to nine to twelve months of talk. So there's a concept in economic development called a ninety day sprint. Um, where you bring in experts from outside that come in and over a shortened period of time provide some pretty intensive information about what a community can do. And um, in advance of this conversation, I reached out to one of my colleagues, Sharon Lesberg, and she has put together some communities that might serve as models in addition to the ones that we've looked at and some companies that do consulting in this way. So um, we're going to need as a board to talk about what this looks like in terms of timelines. Who we need on the committee, because I think the members of the committee not, don't need to be just trustees, but also representatives of all of the parts within the village that are involved in decision making. So somebody from plan commission probably needs to be involved, somebody from public works and whatnot. So that's a lot of coordination among a lot of people. Um, so I think our goal here, we can't take action tonight, but um, know that I think you've got I, I, you know, it's all but one of us who is a conservative school graduate and not here, didn't, which she was here, she would, I assume she would be speaking in favor of this. Um, behind you and behind this idea. And I think we need to probably just provide staff with some direction on what we can bring back to the next meeting or the meeting at two meetings from now to talk about this. So what kind of direction can we help give you? Should we look at models for sustainability committees or consulting companies that might be able to help us out? Or this is a big initiative and we've got a lot going on the next two months, so.
Yeah, I, um, I've been obviously thinking about this as this has been coming forward. Um, my initial thought is that if you do want to initiate a committee, we're gonna, it's gonna be important to look to third party help, even if it's a standing committee. Um, unless we bolster our staff with people uh, who have capacity and specialty in this area. Um, well, I think the utilities certainly is there. I mean, Tim, Tim's kind of been the individual champion there, but Tim has a full utility to run. Um, so there's something about, something that we'd have to evaluate in relation to the or, sort of organizational fortitude. Robert, you talked about that in your comments too, to just look at staff and say, hey, make it happen. Um, this, these folks are, are making um, carrying out your policies happen already. Um, so we'd need to look carefully at our ability to do this well and do it right. Um, and I don't think any of you want to, want to do a committee to only be something that sort of, sort of window dresses, right? I mean, I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't want that if you want to proceed with the committee, so I want to make sure we do it right with the right team. So the question is what those resources would be. Um, and if you want us to research how other committee, our, other communities have built and structured their committees with staff or support. Um, I'm intrigued with the ninety day sprint. Um, government's charged with being a slow-moving operation often. Isaac, you've learned that really well. Um, and maybe we can f- flip that script a little bit with a unique approach on this to get us running. Um, so team, Tim, Brian, other advice for the board?
Yeah, I mean, you guys establish the committee first. I think you're going to want to reach out to other communities to find out, you know, it's very clear that you can put solar on your own municipal buildings. I mean, that's a, that's a layup. When it comes to how you regulate private entities, that's where it's going to be. You're going to want to see what your powers are. Um, and, and, and then that's where you can look to, you know, other communities that have already done this, that maybe are a year into it. Doesn't mean you have to reinvent the wheel. I mean, you can look at the ordinances that they've adopted and how they're trying to incent this. And you know, likely follow that same lead, assuming that's, you know, that you agree with, with what they've implemented.
Tim, any words of wisdom?
Just one, so um, when I was at Sun Prairie, they were in the process of forming their sustainability committee. And one of the things I think that took them a while was uh, coalescing around a consensus of why they're there. And I think they had so many goals and so many objectives, I think that there, that, that would be a, I guess a suggestion of mine is um, you may want to take a few steps first before you try and do everything. So you may want to focus on a few things um, that are attainable, demonstrate that success before creating a plan that, you know, tries to do everything. That would be my thoughts.
Thank you. Other comments or questions?
I, so kind of going to go back to what I said, I mean, and, and I agree with what Tim said there and I, I, I think that expertise is great of certain people, but asking people who already have day jobs to come in and do something like that is, is a big ask and
Yeah.
and we would, we would be, be like, great, the village came up with this thing and now they want me to be there and I really didn't have a say in it. Uh, I, I still think that uh, absent having staff do anything for us, I still think that we should continue, I mean, I wasn't kidding, I said, you know, it should still be on the agenda for the next meeting where we start having that discussion of what does the composition of this look like? I, I think we need to decide that rather than waiting for staff to to tell us. And I think that there are tools out there already from other municipalities that show us how they have their composition set up so that we can set a charge for it. I, then we don't, then once we do the creation, I think that then gets into your sprint mode, but we've got the, we have ARPA funds, we still have to figure out what to, to uh, what this is, this would be a great one-time cost if you're bringing in, you know, somebody to come in and talk about it. And that would take that, as stated, third party would take the stress off of staff of having to come up with that and probably do it faster than, than we could do it ourselves. So I just think that it's, it's important that we kind of keep our foot on the gas and not just, again, I, we, we kind of just said, we threw it to staff again, and, and I know that staff is offering, but I mean, I think we are capable, the seven of us are capable of figuring out at least how we would want it to look like.
I, it, I should be clear, I'm not asking staff to come up with a, a little bit of research on perhaps what other communities are doing. I've got some information on that. Um, but I do not think that this is going to be an internally, I can't imagine that it could be an internally staffed sustainability committee. We just don't, especially with some of the changes we're making this year, don't have, um, I don't think we've got the time to do it. Um, well, so, and nor do we have the expertise. We, this is, there are technical solutions to a lot of these issues. There are best practices that are out there. There are experts that in our, in our community and communities around ours that have addressed a lot of these issues. So I think we're in agreement on that and I don't think I was clear in my comments perhaps.
No, that's fine. And I didn't, I didn't, I'm, I didn't mean to interpret it that we would have staff do that portion. I just meant even doing the setup portion, like we can, we should have that conversation.
I agree. Yeah. Other comments? So, uh, thank you very much, Isaac. Um, great presentation. I really appreciate you caring about, they think we all really appreciate you caring about this and bringing this forward and, and the work that you've put into this and the work that your fellow students who are here raise, will stand up if you're in the room and you're from the ECO. Thank you very much, you guys. Yeah, so love this. Good job, guys. Good job, guys. All right.
Thank you for listening. Thank you so much.
Welcome. And we're going to keep talking about this and we're going to figure it out.
Yeah, so, so uh, Kristen, if you could just be clear, or the board could be clear, um, you'd like to see this uh, on your next meeting agenda. Um, the, we can talk about the resolution and whether there's wordsmithing necessary from a legal perspective, but we can essentially have it prepared in front of you, word for word, if that's what you'd like to see. Um, my question is for my peer communities, the one who have committees is, um, how, how is it staffed? Um, there may be, maybe there's a champion council member who, you know, is, you know, keeping the foot on the gas pedal, or is it a third party, or is it a few citizens, or have they added staff with specialty in this area? Um, so I can certainly do, do that research. Um, or maybe Isaac, we can work together to do some research.
And I'll help you guys with that because I know some of the people staffing those committees. Yeah.
Uh, is that, does that sound like what your, what would be helpful in a couple of weeks?
Probably a good first step.
I was just going to say, maybe not needing the resolution yet until we have the next conversation so that we can give a little bit better direction as to what it, what it should include.
Well, if we have the resolution on the agenda listed, that gives you the ability to spend time as a board tinkering with it.
Okay.
Um, as opposed to not listing it, I, would that make sense to you, Brian?
Yeah, I mean, based on the discussion, I mean, I'm envisioning the agenda item to be, you know, discuss and take action on creating sustainability committee. You potentially are going to have a resolution that's associated with that. Um, we can look to see, I mean, I'm not sure. Like I know I've been at Mount Horb meetings where the sustainability committee, uh, and, and the actions they've taken have been discussed and then ordinance has been adopted. I don't know if my belief is they probably actually have a specific committee identified in their code now, which means that we'd also need an ordinance amendment to include that. I mean, but you know, a lot of stuff falls within the umbrella, the general ball of discuss and take action on creation of sustainability committee. I think you'll be able to discuss everything that you want under that agenda item.
All right. Nyla, did you have a question?
No.
Okay, all right. All right, thank you. So does that sound like enough to work with between now and then? All right. Cool. Thank you, guys. Thank you very much again, Kathy and Isaac and all of the rest of the members of ECO who are here tonight. Next item on the agenda, discuss and take action on reconsidering no mow May. I feel a theme coming on. So, all right, and is that?
Well, uh, I'll share that, um, uh, at your request, we wanted to receive some more data and information um, to the extent that we could even from local experts. We have a local expert, uh, in David Hogg. David, thanks for joining us today. Um, I'll let you give your brief resume background, but you, 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 you do have a rich background in this area. Um, and I can personally, uh, uh, personally claim that the honey that him and his wife put uh, put together is delicious. Um, toast, toasted rye, perfect, just, just perfect. Um, but uh, David, if you could go to the microphone, I think the light is still green. Um, and the board was basically looking for expert opinions, background, thoughts on no mow May as a, as a, a strategy that actually makes a difference in relation to pollinator populations.
Okay. Um, my name's Dave Hogg and um, I'm an entomologist. Um, spent thirty-seven years on the faculty here at U W Madison in the entomology department, so I guess I have some credentials to think about. I, I, I'm interested in insect conservation for sure. Um, so Todd called me and said, do I have opinions about no mow May, which I have had opinions, uh, not totally informed opinions. So this gave me the opportunity to read up on, no. And I learned a lot. Uh, it's amazing how much you can learn from this, but um, I, do you want me to give you like a, a statement or I can just answer questions if you'd like?
What, what's your take on it, first of all? Yeah, so a statement or just a reaction?
Okay, my, my take on it is that it's very well intentioned, it's probably having little impact. So that sort of, um, uh, summarizes it very quickly. The uh, where it has had an impact from, and actually there's been, there've been studies that have been published on this, so I read, read a few of those. Where it has had an impact is where what we call floral resources uh, are involved. Uh, flowers, like here, around here would be dandelions and white clover. Uh, if they'll, if those are in the mix, then yeah. The grass, no. I mean, pollinators, grass is um, that is self-pollinated, is wind pollinated. So it's uh, insects aren't really involved, so no impact on pollinators there, other than maybe creating some habitat when you have, you know, long grass and stuff un- under there, but um, and what I read, what I read about that was that uh, that can actually be harmful because if, if, if insect populations sort of come to rely on that habitat and then on June first, you, you remove it, it's gone. So um, it's the impact is short-lived. So I think, I think the uh, I will say that the, sort of the main thrust of this was to help um, mainly ground nesting bees, solitary bees that are most active in the spring. Um, so that's sort of the gist of it. And I don't know how, do you know how this came about? Do you know the first city to adopt no mow May? Appleton, Wisconsin? And there's a, I mean, and there's some intrigue too, because it was based on a s- uh, uh, research paper that was published by two professors at Lawrence University. Um, and they claimed, um, and the study was done in, in Appleton, that the um, that not mowing in May had a, had a huge impact on pollinators. And um, some people saw that and thought, you know, there's something not right about this. And turned out that the authors had to retract the paper, which is a huge deal in science when it's a peer-reviewed paper. They had to basically say, no, no. I mean, there were, it was very sloppily done and um, so anyhow, Appleton was the first, and I guess Wisconsin is sort of a hotbed of uh, no mow May. I didn't realize that either. I thought it was more nationwide, but it's, it started in Wisconsin and now there are other places that are adopting it, but um, so again, we're very well-intentioned. I think if nothing else has brought, um, certainly brought the, the issue to the forefront of the issue we have with, with pollinators. And I'm pretty passionate about that. I'm passionate about, you know, the fact that insect, um, insects are in trouble. Guys, insects are really in trouble, uh, worldwide. And uh, and pollinators are just one example of that and they're important ones. Um, so whatever we can do to, to help that out, I would be in favor of. I just, I'm not sure no mow May, I mean, um, is having that large an impact, but it's uh, I guess I would, in thinking about this, I, I was thinking maybe it'd be good to have no mow May, but then have maybe uh, informational meetings about, well, this is what you can really do to help pollinators. Um, not just the gimmicky, don't mow your lawn and, and per month in the spring. Um, because there are some other things like University of Minnesota has done some interesting things with uh, with developing what they call bee lawns, where they incorporate some flowers into the landscape. And without, and maybe alter mowing schedules a little bit, but not like let things go for, for a month.
Thank you. That's absolutely, thank you. That is what we needed, the information we needed, I think. What questions do we have? Yeah. Nyla?
When we don't mow for a, a month and then we suddenly cut and there are those who want to catch up on their, their lawn after they've done no mow May and they may be fertilizing or putting um, insect, you know, pesticides or herbicides on or whatever. So my question is, can no more mow May cause more damage than it helps?
Um, yes, I think it could. It could. Uh, I didn't even touch on pesticides. Yeah, that. So um, yeah, that's a bigger threat to pollinators than a lot of other things. I mean, the, the whole idea of having a, and I don't want to get too much on my soapbox here, but the whole idea of having pristine lawns that are basically monocultures of Kentucky bluegrass, um, that's not habitat for, for pollinators or for insects in general. And you keep, keep it mowed to a couple inches. So part of this whole no mow May um, initiative, which was started in the United Kingdom was basically, hey, you know, we got to rethink how we do our, our lawns. It's, it can't go on like this and expect to, to have these uh, pollinator populations thrive.
Other questions?
Can, can I, am I okay if I ask about beekeeping? Am I getting in trouble here? Guess I'm looking at Brian. Okay. Um, so we, village currently does not allow uh, for keeping bees uh, on resident properties. So uh, I've, I've heard, Todd told me that uh, you, you have your own bees. It sounds like if your, your wife prepares honey.
I do. Yeah.
Okay. So what's, what are your thoughts on uh, this? I, I have like a draft ordinance written for
Oh, you do?
for urban beekeeping. It hasn't been introduced yet, so I didn't, I'm, I'm, Brian's going to yell at me. But you know, what, what's the feasibility of, you know, are there concerns about uh, the impact of allowing for urban beekeeping? Is it that, that positive? What, what should we be looking out for here?
And one quick note, David doesn't manage his hives here in Wanaquie.
No, I, I know, I know. Sorry, I thought that was implicit.
They're scattered about.
Yeah, sorry.
Yeah, I have a dozen hives and they are scattered around Dane County.
Sorry, I didn't mean to imply that you had them here illegally. I was just.
Yeah, I mean, Wanaquie is one of the few communities that doesn't allow beekeeping. So I mean, you can look around to see what Middleton does and what Madison does and Verona and yeah, get some ideas. Did I, did you incorporate those in your?
I, 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 I pretty much uh, borrowed liberally from some of the surrounding municipalities because so I wanted to get the language right about flyways and things like that.
Yeah. And you want to, I mean, you have to have restrictions on where they can be relative property lines and things like that.
Right. So I, I was trying to be mindful of that, but I, I just wasn't sure if there is, I, I have heard, I was trying to look for, you know, people who were against it. And uh, once you get past people who confuse bees with, with hornets and wasps.
Well, with yellow jackets. That's, that's the main issue is people think these things that fly around and into your cup of coconut stuff.
Yeah.
Are bees and they're not. They're wasps or yellow jackets. So and they're much more of a nuisance that honeybees will never do that. They, honeybees visit flowers. That's it. And you're not going to get stung unless you, you know, totally disrupt one that's foraging or you, you threaten their hive. And then, then they come after you, but otherwise, no.
I had a question because I was, when we were talking about this earlier, um, and I, just one question. Is there a point at which um, honeybees disrupt native pollinator populations?
Oh.
I read a paper about this.
Good question.
That I don't know if it was, I'm the one that was like, yeah, yeah. So uh, like where's the, is there a tipping point? And should we have you back to talk about this another time? Because I realize this is a bit like, um, we're going to ask you here to talk about no mow May and now we're going to ask you about bees.
Yeah, honeybees are uh, they're not native. Uh, they've been here a long time. So they've been naturalized, I'd say. They've been in the upper Midwest uh, about a hundred and fifty years, probably a little more. But they are some, the, the sort of the pure ecologists consider honeybees a farm animal. That's it. But honeybees are very, they're really, really interesting animals and um, they aren't, they aren't really domesticated. They're sort of semi-domesticated because they can go live on their own. They don't need us. Um, you know, dairy cows wouldn't get very far without people managing them. Or chickens. I mean, I, so I, I don't consider them pure farm animals, but they are, you know, I guess I am kind of a farmer having honeybees. Um, because I manage them and uh, get the, get the honey from them. So yeah, honeybees are kind of overwhelming too, because honeybees are the only bees in the uh, uh, in this part of the world that survive the winters of colony. The whole colony comes out, you know, goes into the winter. If they're successful in Wisconsin, that doesn't happen all the time because of, of our, um, our weather. Um, but they'll come out the other end in the spring with, you know, a hive can have ten thousand workers in it to begin the spring. Well, compare that to solitary bees, for one thing, which never build up those numbers or bumblebees, which, but the other social bee that occur here. But they, they spend the winter as individual queens and every spring they have to start a new colony. So they build up over the summer, by the end of the summer, they might have two hundred and fifty or five hundred individuals in their, in a colony. Honeybees build up over the summer and they'll have fifty thousand. So they can just overwhelm the flower resources. They can overwhelm them. So you're right. There's, there've been stuff written about the poor, you know, native bees are at a big disadvantage because of the honeybees. So it's not a fair fight, but the uh, I mean, the other justification though, for, for uh, honeybee conservation is whatever we do for honeybees is going to be beneficial for the other bees as well. So and honeybees are extremely important for pollinating uh, crops. You know, like the, I don't know how, if you know the story about almonds in California, ninety percent of the world's almond crop is grown in California in like two counties. Those almonds have to be pollinated. And there are like uh, seven hundred, seven hundred and fifty thousand acres of almonds in California. They need about one and a half, on average, one and a half hives per acre to pollinate. So beekeepers from all over the country bring their hives to the Central Valley of California for that pollination, which is occurs around, starts around Valentine's Day. And go, the, the schedule's way off from what we're used to. Um, uh, but it, it's incredible. They pay him a lot of money to, to do that. I mean, the, the big beekeepers um, will take their hives, there are some in Wisconsin, but they'll take their hives to Florida in the winter for open wintery. So they don't have the, have to deal with the severe weather. And they'll load these, they'll load like, some of these guys have like, I don't know, five thousand hives. They'll load them on these big semis and drive them across country in the middle of winter. Very stressful on the bees. Um, but that's how important the honeybees are.
But we're, I'm going to guess have an ordinance come forward and we might need to draw on your expertise for that.
Please.
Oh, but yeah, Nyla. Um, I have a question. I have a, my, my dearest friend in the world is a beekeeper.
And um, I love her to bits, but uh, I'm allergic to bees, not just, you know, hornets, but bees. And from my experience, um, I have uh, I'm under the impression, because my husband has a sawmill, a portable sawmill and a beekeeper that was our neighbor, or he, our neighbor had rented property for a beekeeper to put hives on there. But when the beekeeper found out that my husband had a sawmill there, he, he moved his hives because of the sawmill's uh, motor or motor or whatever. So my question is, does something such as lawn mowing affect bees? And my friend told me that um, if it's very, very hot and somebody mows the lawn, uh, honeybees may affect them. And I'm, I'm just asking your opinion.
Oh, I, I don't have, um, I, I know there's a guy that, I have a couple of hives in Cross Plains, rural Cross Plains. And the uh, I don't own any of the land that my bees are on. I just, the people let me put them on there. Um, and the uh, the guy mows, he doesn't mow too close. Cause if you, you, you know, the loud, loud sound, I think disrupts them and they, they come out.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you very much. We appreciate your time today and um, you'll probably be um,
Okay.
getting us to ask you to come again to talk about a bee ordinance. So thank you very much. Um, we have um, a recommended motion. Do we want to discuss first on whether or not we want to take action or what are your thoughts?
I think it's more what you want to do. In other words, and you don't have to take action, but based on what you've learned tonight. I mean, fundamentally, it's, do you want to continue with no mow May or don't you? If you want to continue with it, then nothing needs to happen. If based on what you've learned, the thought process is, like the speaker said, well-intentioned, but maybe this isn't the best idea. Then at some point in time, you know, within the next few months, staff is going to have to come back and basically put the ordinance back to where it was prior to April of two thousand twenty-two.
Right. Nyla?
I would like to move, I would like to move to direct village staff to bring forward a draft ordinance for board consideration to repeal no mow May. If the board wishes to ma- maintain no.
Right. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion before we move to a motion?
Um, yeah, actually. Uh, so I'm trying to remember when this was passed and I don't remember. So when we, when we passed this ordinance in the past, did, is this an, was this an, it was an actual ordinance? It's not?
So, well, I think, based on what's in the packet, it looks like it was in April of two thousand twenty-two that we actually took the action. And so essentially, I think what happened was we generally have an ordinance that says you gotta, you know, properly maintain your lawn.
Right.
Um, and we modified that ordinance to allow for uh, addressing your lawn differently in the month of May. And so the ordinance change, if the motion passes tonight and it comes back to you is effectively going to go back and essentially undo what we did in April of two thousand twenty-two.
Okay. I was just confirming it was an actual part of the village code that changed.
And I, I'll say, discussion-wise, um, I think that Professor Hogg's uh, suggestion that we provide some education on pollinator-friendly practices might be a good idea. That's not a village staff issue, but maybe we could work with a library. We could talk about what does that look like or look at ways that um, you know, we're doing this to be more pollinator-friendly. Um, this is not an anti-pollinator move. Imagining the headlines on Monday or on Tuesday morning.
I mean, there's something that says that we can't make that an agenda item for a future, no, I mean, for if we create a sustainability, I mean, committee, that could be something that we test them.
I think we just got a, a good education in pollinator-friendly practices. Um, all right. Any other, yes?
Well, I would just, just to piggyback off, I was at the Mount Hore meeting and helped Mount Hore with the ordinance that uh, Isaac had put, had referenced in the bullet point. And so I do believe that Mount Hore has no mow May, but I also know that they modified their ordinances more recently i- in a similar fashion. Effectively, we have general rules that relate to lawns. But then they have this concept, I think of a, like a uh, a garden, you know, not your standard veget- you know, vegetable garden, but a, a garden that's assisted, there to assist and essentially have natural habitats or assist pollinators. So it is something that the sustainability could look at. And again, if you don't want to reinvent the wheel, you already got a municipality in Dane County that went through that process.
I love that we've got those municipalities that we can borrow from. Um, that's a great idea. Um, any other discussion or comment?
Sure.
Yes.
Um, I will say I'm a little bit torn on this, not because necessarily we should do no mow May. But I, I am not feeling convinced that it's a bad thing. It may just not be a good thing. So I'm probably more inclined to leave the ordinance as it is if somebody chooses to do that. I mean, it's not a mandate, but
No.
it's not like we're saying you can't mow during the month of May. Um, so I guess I'm just kind of more inclined to leave it as is.
All right. Other thoughts?
Um, from the, from what I um, had put together, or I, it's my own personal notes on this. I looked at the impatient gardener and um, they talk about no mow May and that it actually may do more harm than good because of what it does to your lawn and then what people want to do to um, bring their lawns back. Um, so that, that's my concern is that we, we may not be doing the good that we wanted to do and we may be causing harm. And I just wanted to make that statement. So.
All right. Other thoughts?
And I would say, and at least in some cases in my own neighborhood, uh, even across the street from my house, you know, we have a, a neighbor, great, we have no mow May now. Then that's my excuse to not mow my lawn for the rest of the year. Or take care of it, which, you know, but I, I, I do agree. It really is a shock to the system really uh, for these habitats. And you know, it also affects, you know, ground mammals, rabbits, you know. I, I know of a case where an individual participated on their farm and uh, ground up rabbit after uh, mowing the lawn. So, yeah.
It's been known to happen. Yeah. Um, I, I'm a little bit more towards you, Joe. Um, I don't think it's a necessary ordinance. Um, I don't know, I, I can't imagine that we're going to start handing out violations if people are not mowing in May. Um, are we handing out violations a lot now?
Well, I mean, to, to be clear, I mean, if, if
We can.
if, if, if you go back, I mean, we have an ordinance in place and we need, you know, now it's usually enforced, I think, complaint-based, which is standard practice for municipalities. But yes, I would say, yeah, we would enforce it.
Right. Other thoughts? No? All right. Pardon?
No, I just have, I'm like indifferent on it.
Yeah. All right. Um, are we ready to vote? All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I, opposed?
Aye.
All right. Um, it passes. All right. Next up, um, discuss and take action on policy for remote, remote participation by elected and appointed members of village boards, committees and commissions. This is page seventy-six on your packet. And Todd?
Yeah, this, this has been a discussion the board's had a few times before. Um, you did direct staff to come back with a, a sample policy. Um, I'll credit Verona as having had one that I used as part of the framework for building this one.
part of the framework for building this one. Um, the perspective staff had from the board was that uh, this was to be seen as, as an occasional circumstance, uh, not the norm, um, but more to address unusual conditions. And um, the, the tweaks and the modifications that made it a Verona policy was to lean further towards um, being clear that our perspective is that an in-person meeting is the best possible meeting um, to see all forms of communication at play. Um, so that statement was included in the policy. And we tried to build in parameters that afforded limited use in special circumstances. So this is definitely a policy perspective of the boards that uh, that staff and Brian are willing to help continue with modifications as you would see fit.
All right. Questions and comments on the policy?
Uh, I have a lot of uh, comments on this policy. Number one, I think there needs to be, uh, it, it shouldn't be the same requirement uh, for village board members and committee members. Uh, you may have a, a case where a committee meets eight times a year or six times a year, and this would allow, you know, maybe two thirds of, of people to uh, not come. Uh, I do not believe uh, those meetings should be consecutive. Um, another concern I had is when we were doing Zoom meetings, uh, during COVID, we had cases where people were driving and participating in meetings, which is a significant safety concern. Uh, we had another case where an individual was skiing. Um, so I think uh, we need to outline very clearly in there that uh, we should not have people, you know, driving or, or doing anything like that. And those would be my initial reactions.
All right. Other comments? Nyla.
Um, I would suggest that the person chairing the meeting needs to be present at the meeting if they're um, coming in through Zoom, that some, a person and per, a, a member in person needs to be the chair of the meeting. Um, I agree with Sam that meetings should never be consecutive, that you use Zoom. Um, when uh, you're uh, coming in on Zoom, I feel that the location of where you are during those meetings should be provided. And um, if a person is coming in on Zoom because of health reasons, I think they should still need to say at least that they're in Wisconsin and that they're not driving so that uh, we're not possibly you know, causing any safety problems with the driving. And then I have a few questions. Um, what will the cost be to the village? Uh, is it going to take additional staff to track this and to monitor it and keep track of it? Um, I'm also concerned that right now with attendance um, in the handbook pertaining to meetings, only sixty-six percent of the meetings need to be attended and still keep your positions on a committee or a um, or as a trustee. And if we add four virtual meetings, um, it could end up being a half a year that trustees don't have to be here. And I don't feel that that's appropriate at all. Um, you know, I, I guess my thing is, is it, will we end up having a situation where we have people who are going on down south for the winter, who have places on the board and they aren't in touch with what's going on here. For instance, if we had a power outage and residents come to a board meeting and they're frustrated and, and they, they have plumbing that's frozen. And here I'm sitting in sunny Florida with a margarita or whatever. And um, where's the, where's the understanding and the caring? And, you know, people want to know that you care enough to come to a meeting, for gosh sakes. That's just my opinion. Thank you.
Other comments?
I've got a couple for, probably for Brian. Um, first thing I would ask, um, there's been concern about people engaged in the meetings while driving. Do you know if that is addressed through, oh, there was a texting law or something a while back? Would that apply there?
You know, I don't, I, I think, well, I guess I, I'm not well versed on the driving laws. I mean, my understanding in talking to police officers who are frustrated is you, there aren't any. In other words, it's distracted driving. Is that, it's basically, you know, the, what, what, what in Wisconsin, as opposed to other states, you have to demonstrate that it was a distracted driver as opposed to, you know, you can't use your phone. And so I mean, I would say this, I, I think it makes sense to say, look, if you're gonna participate in a meeting, you can't be driving. I mean, I think that that's a layup on, on how you would enforce it to make sure it's not happening. That's, that's a different issue. Um, you know, whether or not it would actually violate the law, I think that would deter, depend on the circumstances of the driver. Um, but I think no question, you can put it in your policy. And then if you're gonna participate in that fashion, you shouldn't do that. Um, I, I, I would be, I, I don't, I don't, I just want, I would be a little hesitant on, and I'm not sure if somebody said that, but so like stating the reasons for why you're doing this, because we also have to be clear that we can't require somebody to provide medical information about why they may be participating, you know, virtually. And so as soon as you start asking, you know, saying, I, I, my recommendation would be if you're gonna allow this, I get at that at a different issue of there's only a certain number of times that you can do this. Potentially change the handbook that suggests that maybe now that people can participate virtually, you have to attend more than just two thirds of the meetings. You have to, you know, you can bump up that percentage. Um, I would stay away from requiring the person to explain why they're doing this because if, if it is for a medical reason, now you've put that person in a predicament and we can't require somebody to provide that medical information. Um, so I would just try to approach it from a different angle.
Okay. The, my thought on the driving thing was basically if it's covered elsewhere, then we don't necessarily need to.
No, I think I would, I would recommend, I would recommend including it.
Yeah.
Is it, is it covered by the having to be on camera part of it?
Potentially. Um, I mean.
That was my question.
But I think that's the way that you make sure that somebody's not doing it. There's, they have to be on camera and it's gonna be pretty obvious then if they're driving.
You appear to be driving.
So the, the next thing, um, and maybe this gets to kind of the why, but also the location. If we were to say, you know, where are they? Is that?
Uh, you know, I, I I would approach it more from the standpoint of limiting and, and again, maybe changing the handbook so that, you know, if theoretically, if you're gonna allow people to participate virtually, then you should require people to be in attendance at more meetings than sixty, that sixty-six percent number should increase. I just, we absolutely cannot require somebody to divulge medical information and it's, and in light of that, and that's, that's a black and white issue. Then the other things that you might want to contemplate, you might not have the power to do it. And so.
Sure. Um, another one of the items was um, the consecutive meetings. I think that's probably a good thing, but my concern would be um, maybe somebody has a village board meeting on a Monday and they have some committee meeting on a Tuesday. Are those considered consecutive or is it consecutive within whatever that, you know?
I guess I intended it within the particular bo- body.
Okay.
That, that was my intent of the remark.
Yeah, I'd, I'd find that definitely more palatable, otherwise um, the reason that they're out for one may very well be the reason that they're out for the next and, and they can't do that. Um, and then the only other thing I think I had was the five days notice to staff and I very much understand the need to continue to have quorum, even if you've got some people that are away. How critical is that five days or could we?
Yeah, I, I actually, I kind of whittled back on the language that in Verona's policy was very strict. Yeah, I think it had the word must, must inform staff by five days. It, and the reasoning was to allow us to, one, confirm the situation with um, quorum, but also to make sure technology was in place and suitable for the meeting to, you know, work well. That's not, that's not, that timing issue isn't critical for us. We've got the technology. We're built and ready to do it.
Okay.
Uh, I could just add to, um, so for Wana Key to hold a board meeting, you need four. For Verona, hold a council meeting, they need six. And so I actually, in anticipation of tonight's meeting, I did go back and watch the January meeting. And I think some of the former board members noted that they don't ever recall Wana Key having to cancel a board meeting because of lack of a quorum. I can tell you that Verona has had to cancel council meetings because they haven't been able to get six people. And so I think that might be one of the reasons why they, the language was stronger in the Verona policy on that issue.
Okay. Thank you.
Robert?
Go last. Um, yeah, that's true. Okay. So, uh, I, I'm gonna say I have a huge personal bias here because I, if, if my employer, um, ninety percent of my workforce is remote, complete a hundred percent and the remaining ten percent are hybrids. So uh, I'm, I'm kind of a fan of, of allowing this. However, uh, I do strongly agree on the consecutive clause, uh, that's been brought up repeatedly. Um, definitely not while driving and uh, most of us who, who, who have any sort of technology for employer sign an acceptable use policy that says I will not use this while I'm driving a vehicle. So uh, that should be pretty standard. Um, I, I was gonna ask Brian, uh, if, if, if somebody just needs, if somebody needs like an ADA consideration, you just have to say, you know, like if it's a short term or long term disability, you just say, I need, I need this for you know, ADA purposes. And then that's it, right? Like we don't, that gets around the whole knowing what it is, or having to ask what it is if they're just, it's kind of like the.
A reasonable accomod, I mean, I think, I mean, I, I haven't looked specifically at that issue. I mean, I thi, I definitely think this could constitute, well, my gut tells me it could be a reasonable accommodation issue, in which case then you would have to allow it. Um, I, I'm struggling with the idea of, you know, it's been a while since I've looked, worked in that area of the law. Um, so I'm struggling with employees versus, you know, elected officials or committee members and what protections exist. But assuming that the disability laws do apply to things like being on a committee or being an elected official, in all likelihood, the, the, any individual who wants to rely on a reasonable accommodation argument would be able to do whatever they want. Now that we have hybrid capabilities, whether you, we have a policy or not, is the, again, the way I would approach it.
Okay.
And, and now, and I mean, obviously before we didn't have these hybrid capabilities, now we clearly have them. So the door has already been opened to that issue.
Cause I'm thinking of at the, the school district, I remember when um, uh, Director Hetzel had heart surgery and he was remote for them. And I don't think they have a policy at all. I just think it was, they just gave them the accommodation and said, yeah, it's fine. You don't need to be here. But he still participated in their meetings virtually. Um, I, I, I don't, I don't necessarily agree with the disclosing of the location. I, I think that that's a little too intrusive because I think uh, I, I mean, I, I was, I'm sorry, I was thinking of an old Simpsons joke about who brought the, who brought those maracas into the mayor's office because Mayor Quimby was in, in Hawaii during a, um, disaster. So I, I really, I, 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 I would really struggle. I think we just have to trust people at some point that they would make a, the right decision. And the, I, as I was diving into the handbook, so what's I'm, I'm a big stickler for rule following here, but the handbook, what's the enforceability of the handbook? Because when we talk about attendance, the handbook definitely does not consider a trustee because that's, that's governed by state law. I assume.
Well, I mean, I, I get, the handbook that has been referenced here for elected, elected officials and community members, I don't think I've actually ever seen. But I'm not suggesting it doesn't exist, but I don't think I've ever been asked to review it or look at it. Um, essentially, th- there is state law that basically says, look, if you have a, 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 an elected official who's not attending to their duties as an elected official, most notably not attending meetings, then there's a, a process for removal. And so it, that is effectively, you know, the ultimate enforcement mechanism, whether are you, whether or not the village has a policy or not.
Okay.
But I can't comment on the actual document because I don't think I've actually ever seen it.
It, 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 that's fine. I wasn't, I, I wasn't asking, I didn't think it had any legal enforceability. It's kind of just like a, you know, for, well, I mean, we, we have the ability to enforce against our own committee members because we set the rules for our committees, but it's not like it lives within the bylaws of our municipal code or anything that that this handbook has any power.
You're for, you're referring to that, um, you know, this.
The handbook for committee.
Twenty seventeen.
For the handbook for boards, commissions and committees. Yeah, it was last updated October twenty seventeen.
I, I think the teeth, I mean, if it does have a, if it does have language and they're saying you have to attend a certain number of meetings, then to me, that essentially be, and if someone is not attending that percentage of meetings, that then becomes the evidence or argument that would support the removal of the person under the state statutes. If, if, if you actually sought to pursue that as, as a body.
Of, of a non-trustee.
Well, I mean, oh, it does, I guess this is where I'm a little.
It, it, we, we write in here that it states that the village board retains the right to remove any member of a board, commission or committee, but that's not a trustee. That's.
I guess this is where I'm, I'd have to take a closer look at the language. Cause when you say board, I mean, you know, theoretically it could apply to the, to the village board, but.
I, I, what bothers me is it says a board, which sounds a little more.
You're right, as opposed to the board.
Yes.
As I look at this handbook, it looks like a combination of state statute references in relation to open meetings, um, public meeting law, public record law. Um, something called the handbook for Wisconsin municipal officers, which I'm not sure what.
That may be something that the, the, the league has a document.
And then, and then I believe there are references, uh, straight out quoted from our own code related to qualification of members, chairperson responsibilities. Um, remember removal.
I'm, I'm gonna get a little, I mean, I'm, I'm staying on topic, but again, I'm just, the, the concept of this document terrifies me a little bit right now. Because we have something that's, I mean, if we have a code, let's just look at our code. Cause then you have this document and if we modify our code, then we necessarily have to go ahead and modify that document. And it just becomes cumbersome. Um.
So, so that's why I bring this up because if we're talking about attendance at meetings and things like that, I, we have a direct conflict with the, and I'll be nice, advisory document as to how we should conduct business. And so I would just want to make sure that we would be mindful of making sure that there's a, uh, we're saying the same thing when we, if we have a policy. Cause I do support. Here, here's where I'm, I'm gonna be very clear on where I stand on this. I do support it for non-trustees a hundred percent because I know that we struggle to get attendance to meetings. And if this increases attendance to it, uh, these are not elected officials. These are people volunteering their time. These are people who have family obligations. And if it means they can attend, even if their kid photobombs every once in a while while they're attending because they're, they're, they don't, can't get childcare. I think that that's something that we need to extend. When it comes to a trustee, I just, I struggle with it because there's so many unanswered questions about uh, in my mind about how trustees would use this outside of, um, you know, very legitimate reasons that I think I kind of hinted at with like medically necessary reasons. So I that's, that's where I stand on this. That's probably not helpful for staff trying to craft anything, but.
I think we're probably headed towards a rewrite. Not ready to vote on anything tonight. So um, I'll give my two cents in. Um, I, um, obviously I think that trustees should be allowed to occasionally participate remote. I don't have um, an issue with four times a year. I feel like that's a reasonable limitation. Um, the not, can, they can't, that they can't be consecutive. I think it's gonna be a conflict if we've got a trustee that's in a caregiving position, um, a parent that has had a heart attack or a stroke and they need to be present. Um, oftentimes those parents or those children, if you have a, an adult child that lives outside of the state and is in a medical situation or you need to attend the, a complicated birth of my sister-in-law's birth, her mother had to come out and stay with her for months afterwards. Um, it feels punitive in those instances to say that you can't participate. I think there are other instances that are warranted too. If there's an important vote coming up and you know, you're on vacation that week, um, should we really be saying that you cannot zoom in to a meeting? Um, my own instance, I was up working with the Lakdefombo tribe and asked for participation and, and could not get back in time for the meeting. And I don't think that did not feel warranted, nor did it feel in the best interest of, of the state as a whole or for, for us as a community. Um, so I think there are times where there are reasonable exceptions that can be made. If you're skiing and calling in from a ski hill, forget it. Yeah, take the, take the night off for sure. And definitely not while calling. Um, I heard, heard from a couple of people about snowbirds. Um, we don't prevent snowbirds from serving in elected positions. This needs to be your primary residence, but I don't recall anything in the handbook or the ordinance that says that you can't like leave for a month. So maybe that's something we need to talk about, um, in a different context altogether. And on the location provided for the meeting or requiring people to be in Wisconsin, again, I think that's, it's too intrusive for, for um, location. And if you are, you know, aiding a family member or you are on a work trip that's outside of the state, I don't think that should prevent people from participating if we're gonna allow remote participation. Um, those are my two cents. Yes.
I just, uh, one, if you want to, you definitely have the ability to create a policy that applies to board members and a separate policy that applies to committee members. Um, state statutes are gonna govern whether, whether or not somebody can be an elected official. And like this, the concept of snowbird, we're not gonna have the, you have the ability. And like this, the concept of snowbird, we're not gonna have the you have the ability to require people to be at meetings. You're not gonna have the ability to say, because you're living in Arizona for two or three months out of the year, that that but you're a state resident, that that knocks you out of the ability to run. That's a statutory issue that we can't get into just to I just want to make sure that, you know, kind of talk about that issue right out of the get go to me, and I'm not implying that you were suggesting that we were gonna do that. But that's your ability to run for elected office is specifically governed by the state statutes.
All right, Tricia Niley, both had comments.
So I'm agreeing with a lot. So when I was thinking, you know, what what reason would it be where I would have to participate remotely? And in most cases, it's something that came up as a work emergency, where I had to go visit a client, or we had a situation on a project or something that took me out of the area, and it would typically almost always be out of Wisconsin in that case where we couldn't get back. So I think I think disclosing the location seems feels a little bit weird in that regard. I think the the on camera, I mentioned this earlier, a piece of it is good, because I think that you want to be able to like see the room and and have dialogue and conversation and have your physical presence be seen. So I hundred percent agree with that. The other one, and Linda emailed me, and I'm assuming she some of the other comments have been similar. The the one suggestion that I actually, we haven't talked about yet was that the person chairing the meeting needs to be present, but that the chair could remotely like assign the chair duties to somebody else that's in person. I don't disagree, that might not be a bad idea. And I I'm looking at you, because in that situation, would you have had somebody else chair it perhaps?
I agree, yeah, I think you need to be in the room.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's a lot that happens here that you just need to be signals from staff and things that go on.
Yeah, so I I would agree in something to that incorporating something like that.
I have a couple of questions. The meetings that are not hybrid at this time, will they become hybrid, such as the parks committee meets outside a lot? And are is it going to cost staff time to track all this? And and if we're going to have all hybrid meetings, is that going to cost us additional staff time, because it's going to take more staff to be to cook to to be at every meeting?
The way that I'm reading the policy is it's not a conversion to hybrid meetings. It is allowing remote participation four times a year for whoever we decide that applies to, whether it's all committee members or trustees. Okay, so there are staff members currently at every meeting?
No.
Are do we have a staff member at every?
Usually there's a staff member at every.
We have staff members, but there is no hybrid, you know, usually.
What what we have done in a few cases prior to kind of digging into the conversations is we've had. I remember once, I think it might have been the Create Wannakee Committee. We were having trouble making quorum, and we had one or two people who could join us on a laptop screen. That's what we did. And we had set that at the one end of the big table at the library and ran our meeting that way. So it doesn't turn into turn it into ongoing meetings as hybrid. But as Kristen pointed out, allows the opportunity in that setting. It all with that said, this room can also be used more for for any of the committees who feel like a hybrid meeting, even if it's a one off, depending on the topic. This is something we can accommodate now. And if if that's if that's something any committee wishes to do, we're happy to work with them.
And also, I mean, whether if you have a policy, it's still going to be the application of the policy. It's going to have to be in a situation where you can do it. In other words, and and onsite Parks Committee meeting is just it's not going to be available in the in that circumstance. The other thing to keep in mind is, no matter what you do tonight, if you adopt a hybrid policy, you we still have to make sure that every meeting satisfies the meetings law. So the easiest thing to keep in mind is, if we're if if somebody is participating remotely, everybody who's on that committee is going to have to be able to hear everything that that committee member says. The committee member is going to have to be able to hear everything that's being said, and that includes the public, too. So now, there are many communities that are doing this. I'm not saying that as an advocate, because if you go back to the January meeting, it's Todd was very clear. This is a policy decision for the board. It's not a staff level decision. My only point is, if you decide to do this, the state statutes still apply. You can do it under the state statutes, but you do have to. I mean, this is this is pretty easy in this in this building, in this room. Everything is set up well. How that exactly is set up where other committee meetings are held is debatable, maybe in in light of what you're saying. And and just to be clear, if it's held in 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 a a room that's not this room, we're gonna have to make sure that if it is, if if somebody's participating remotely, that that everybody from the public can hear. I mean, the other thing I would add is, when you look at your agenda for tonight's meeting, I mean, you already allow member residents to participate through Zoom. And so allowing a committee or a board member to do it, you know, on a very limited basis is consistent with the policy that you've effectively already adopted for your meetings.
Okay, so my I'm back to my question. Is all staff trained to be able to do this? And will it cost additional dollars to track Zoom meetings that board members attend?
We we already do attract attendance for for all committees, all boards, all commissions. That's tracked for compensation purposes. So that we we keeping tabs on who's at what, when is in our already done function? As for a circumstance where let's say the the library board, maybe that's a bad example, because they they can establish their own meeting policies and rules. Is that accurate, Brian?
The the library board is probably a unique circumstance, essentially, and and I'm talking at a very high level, but we control the purse strings for the library, and the library pretty much controls everything else. So I wouldn't focus on the library board. I'd focus on Parks Committee or Finance Committee or something.
If if there was a circumstance where Sue says, Todd, we're gonna have a quorum issue where we have a member who is ill and needs to get in somehow. I'll work with Sue on a solution, certainly to meet here as an option, or we can arrange a a laptop. She also has rooms with equipment that could accommodate large screen projections. So we're pretty, if there is anything that we're fortunate for, except we've got we've got facilities, we've taken. We've added infrastructure to to allow things like this to work. So I think we're in a good position as far as added investments we need to make. I I don't I don't know if I'd put it, put a serious dollar amount on that, Nyla.
I just wanted it answered.
You know, that's good. Staff time, you know, maybe it's maybe it's chair or myself attending a committee that we otherwise wouldn't of, but we're already salary employees for the village.
So one of the things to note in this is that we've got a single policy that applies for member staff, applicants, consultants, and or am I missing the trustees? Did we separate out trustees incubates for this policy? Are they in the same policy?
This I drafted this universally. So members would be trustees or any member of a board commissioner or.
I think we might not, I'm gonna take venture guess that we might not agree on trustees, but would we agree that we want a separate policy to govern govern committee members?
Yes.
So could our direction be to staff? Could we separate that out for our next meeting? Perhaps would that be agreeable to everyone? Rather than vote something down, and then how do we bring it back? And have we just constrained committee members in a way that we don't want to constrain committee members, regardless of what we'll do for trustees?
Is is your thought that there would be greater flexibility afforded to committees or less or?
Greater flexibility is what I feel like the consensus is, but I don't actually know that.
I I I would still say in terms of the committees itself, I think the the consecutive clause is still important, just because they meet less frequently. You know, this is twice a month, they may meet monthly, they may meet quarterly. You know, if it's a quarterly committee, then all of a sudden, hey, you can do everything remotely. You don't ever have to show up in person. Can I can I add then a kind of maybe a compromise comment on there? And I'm gonna make a whole lot of bureaucracy, I'm sorry, but we just leave it to the discretion of the committee as to whether or not they even the chair of the committee to decide that. So whoever's the trustee chair has that flexibility to make that decision. This would then cover issue with parks. It would cover, I mean, obviously, we're never gonna allow EMS and fire representative to do this, because that's not that's not hybrid capable at all. So I mean, I I feel like if we take that away, then it can be discretionary at that point. And then we just use this policy as guidelines as to how it's it's it would work. Does that make this overly confusing or? Because then 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 we don't have to do a one size fits all. We can just say, we want X, Y, and Z to apply to everything. But then when it comes to Sam, your issue with, you know, failing meet once a quarter, then they can just say that it's not necessary to have. If somebody can't make time to to come in four times a year, then obviously, this is not the committee for them.
But I mean, at the end of the day, I mean, it's your policy, so you can you can do it that way. The one thing that I was thinking about is you always have the ability to kind of do. You know, you you can't, you you can miss consecutive, but you can't miss either, you know, the greater of either fifty percent of the meetings or however, you know, whatever number you want to set. I mean, there's different ways that you can attack it with the, I mean, although, as I'm saying that, I think that what you said may work better. I mean, just the idea of you do have the ability to give discretion to the the chair. Now, anytime we give discretion where it's subjective rather than objective, obviously, you know, we we open their door open for you treated this person differently than you treated me. But, you know, I mean, it doesn't mean you don't start there. And if it doesn't work, then you always have the ability to go back to more objective standards. So I mean, I think that is definitely one way that you can approach it.
I and I want to clarify, because you raise a valid point there about treating one person different. I meant just subjectivity for the chair, just aside for the committee in general, not specific request.
Oh, gotcha, yeah, okay. No, yeah, that can definitely be done. And and the other thing to keep in mind is, if you do adopt a policy, this is still new territory that you're getting into here with hybrid meetings and and allowing people. I mean, it can always be updated. If if you find, you know, it may be that the committee chair says, you know what, I really don't, I want you to set the policy for me, because I don't want to have to make that determination. That's also some things that committee members may say is and that that would dictate, well, you know what? Let's revisit this issue and maybe set up more objective standards. But generally, providing the flexibility in the way that you described, it may be the better way to approach it on the front end at least.
And I know that Westport, not terribly long ago, implemented a policy allowing this. So it may not be a bad idea for somebody to have a conversation with Dean as to, you know, some of the thoughts that that their board members had. How has it, you know, worked and so forth?
I'll ask I'll say him on Thursday, I'll ask him.
So are we leaning towards more discussion next time? Okay, all right. All right, good discussion tonight. And Tim, yes.
If I may, so this, there's a member of our CDA who is awaiting a response to the question, because this person cannot attend the Wednesday meeting and asked if they could participate remotely. So under our current policy, and jump in here, please, Brian, under our current policy, the answer is no, this person may not participate, because no action was taken tonight.
Yeah, you I I think that's correct, that, I mean, under the current policy, you certainly have the ability to do a one off if you want to tonight, and basically say, you know what? For purposes of the CDA meeting on on Wednesday night, it's from the from a policy perspective, the board is okay with this member participating remotely.
We've got a big agenda or an important agenda.
Well, it's it's one item, but it's an important, you know, it's a public hearing and a recommendation for a creation of a TIF district.
Could I just make a motion to that effect then, Brian?
Can I ask one question first? Is there a quorum without this person or not?
At this point, we believe there is. We have not heard from anyone else.
Thank you. Do I make a motion if I?
Yeah, I mean, to the extent a board member, I mean, I guess it'd be motion to allow Mr. Toos, Mr. Toos to attend Wednesday's CDA meeting remotely.
So moved.
Second.
All right, any discussion on the motion?
Yeah, has he been attending his other meetings? So this would be this first time that he's not.
In the last year, I think he's missed one other.
Okay.
I don't, off the top of my head, I don't know.
And.
He's typically there.
And and since we don't have a policy, then I think it who's asked question, because we we kind of had a long discussion when you weren't here, and this came up. What is it that's preventing his attendance? Do we know?
He hasn't.
He hasn't stated at this point.
Okay.
Any other discussion? I would argue just for the importance of the meeting, that it is a public hearing, and if there's a big vote that we would want to encourage participation or allow participation since it's possible. All right.
Every meetings, I mean, you can make that case in every meeting. This is this is kind of gonna go back to when we had this conversation, when you had requested it.
I am making that case for every meeting, yes.
Yeah, and 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 it goes back to the overall conversation that we had at the time, which is if it's important to you to the individual to be there, then.
My heart flips with that. I was up serving a Native American nation the night that you guys denied me participation.
Your personal experience aside, Kristen, because now you're making this a personal, you're making you're taking you're bringing personalities into this.
I am not, I am folding up an example of what I think was a bad decision on the part of this board. That's not personal, that is.
That's your opinion, though.
Absolutely.
But we but we we had a vote on this. So my concern is that you're you're gonna make this exception for Mr. Toos. By the way, I like him. We served on the housing, I I have nothing against him, but he's not there. I missed a vote over the summer that I would have, if I had known it was an option to even have the conversation where Ted was involved that that passed, that I was not afforded. And I'm not saying that I'm spiteful about this, but I'm saying that we're applying unevenly here for when we think it's important to have a committee member there, just because they make requests. People miss committee meetings all the time. We've had a trustee who hasn't been here for three consecutive meetings. So I I I again, I'm gonna go towards, we're gonna set a precedent here, even if we don't come up, even if we come up with a policy next week.
So it's not, you know, you can make an exception, you don't have to make an exception every time. I will say in your instance, when you were on the Housing Task Force and you were in Florida for business, we walked around pre Zoom with you on camera so that you could participate, because we were making policy decisions that night. So I feel it's disingenuous, and this is a an opinion, disingenuous to say that in one instance, it's okay to participate. In another instance, where we are having probably a more important policy decision that we're gonna say no. I think it's in the best interest of the village to have the committee members participate, whether you have a personal feeling that that's the the the, you know, it has to be in person versus, you know, somebody can be perfectly capable of weighing in and voting when they're not here. This is an important committee meeting on Wednesday. It's best for the village if we have all hands on deck for that and to make it. So that is absolutely my opinion.
Then I'm just gonna end on it's it's one one night a month that everybody knows what what day of the month.
Yes, yeah. And sometimes you have to be out of town for things. So we don't know his reason, he hasn't given it, could be any number of things. So any more discussion on that? If not, let's move to vote, all in favor? I. Opposed?
No.
All right. Next item on the agenda.
Just to be clear, my understanding is that was three, three, which means it doesn't pass.
It doesn't pass, yes.
And just for the record, who is the name votes, please? I love. Thank you.
All right, next item on the agenda. Take action, discuss and take action on the Horizons newsletter publication.
You want to, you wanna jump up?
Yes.
And I'm green. So I guess to start this conversation, what I want to really start with is that as a staff, it is always our very first priority to communicate with our community very effectively. That is always our goal, regardless of what department we are in, or regardless of what we're trying to share with the community. But our second goal, I think, is also to make sure that we're efficient. And we've been sharing information with the general public through our Horizons publication the same way for about eight years. It's a triannual publication that is mailed to everyone's home. Half of the publication includes information about general government such things that are happening. It's time to pay your taxes. Bill's picking up leaves. Police Department has information about safety issues that are important to the community. The other half of the publication includes information from our Community Services Department about activities and programs that are available to the general community. It's worked great for us. But as with everything that we do, it's become a little bit stale. And we've been talking as a department head group for actually quite some time, a couple of years, about is this the most efficient way that we can communicate with our citizens about what's happening in the community? And we've we've had some varying opinions about that. And we've come up with a proposal that is before you tonight, and that is a little bit of a change. And that is that first half of the publication we are proposing is going to come to citizens of Wannakee on an annual basis. Our, our vision is that it is a eight and a half by five and a half publication, kind of a glossy piece of paper that can withstand the test of time. Todd likes to talk about it as that document that you stick behind the phone on the wall at your grandma's house or at your own house, if you still have one of those. So that publication is going to be a general guide to village services, all of those important things that you might want to know as a new resident in the community or as a continuing resident. So all departments throughout the village would be included in that publication. A very comprehensive document. On the other hand, the information about programs and activities that are available, whether it's through the community services department, the library, the senior center, those things are more seasonal. And so we are planning on continuing still a triannual publication. The difference there though, however, is that it is not our intention at this point to mail that to every home in the village. We really, you know, talk about sustainability earlier this evening. We know, we know firsthand that there are some people that keep that activity guide and scribble in it and fold the pages in. They come to our front counter and say, I want this class. And so we know that some people really value that piece of paper. But we also know that there are a lot of people that say, people call us and say, you know, are there new ice skating lessons? And we're like, well, it's in the activity guide that you got in your mail. And they say, my husband throws all the junk mail away. And so we really want to be careful with our resources. And so our plan for that triannual guide is still to print some copies, but make them available for people that really want that paper copy. So here at Village Hall, Village Center, Library, anywhere in town where you could pick one up if you wanted to hold the real copy. But primarily make it available online. And we already are using that, that resource with our guide. The last time we published, we did a little bit of a test. My office manager posted it online. We sent out emails telling people it was available. Within three days, we had 3,000 hits on that publication. So we do feel like that is a, a good balance of being able to get that information into people's hands. So that's our proposal. Jared and I and Todd have been working with the department heads to try to figure out how to approach that. We sent out an RFP. We got a great response. We had 10 different organizations answer our RFP to be our new partner in creating both of those publications. We narrowed it down to two. We had a group of employees from all different departments that sat in on our interviews and we have selected American Solutions for Business slash American Diversity, a firm out of Sun Prairie as our proposed vendor for this agreement. What's in your packet is a two-year agreement that will create, starting the first of the year, that annual publication that covers all municipal services will be mailed to all homes. And then starting with the April program and activity guide, that piece that will be printed in limited copies and available online. Did I miss anything?
Good job.
Questions from the board?
When you send out the first one, will there be a notification in it that the next one will be done differently? So they will understand that it's, they can get it on the web or they can pick one up?
Yep. We're actually right now in publication of the last of the triannual guides. And so I know specifically in, on our side of the publication, we had several notices in that publication saying things are changing. Jared, I guess I don't know about your side of the publication, if you're working on that as well. Or Todd?
Oh, no, that I don't think there's a spectacular announcement there. I think in that what comes out in, in January, the start of the year, that piece will have a highlight on the communication modification and how to best be prepared to keep consuming information from us.
I just would like to make the statement that I think it's very important. And as you said, there will be printed copies because those residents who depend on print are the very ones that we want to keep active and going in our community. And we never want to create a situation where people feel like they're left out ever. So.
And to that point, we've spoken very specifically about that with Cindy Mosiman and the functions of the senior center as one, one big, one sample population where maybe the printed version would be extra useful. And we've already talked about our strategies to make sure that things don't go, don't go backwards.
And another place other than the library, senior center, village center and village hall where they could be taken would be neighborhood connections and the food pantry.
Absolutely. Good, great idea. Thank you, Nyla.
So I was going to ask, there's a very supportive of this in offering an electronic solution because yes, sometimes I've lost some of these that come in because they were bundled in with other things. And if, sorry, if it's that giant mailer thing and it gets stuck in there, that does, does end up in our recycling pretty quickly. But the, now let's your point, the senior centers mailer that comes out, is that, I think it's monthly.
The senior center does have a monthly newsletter that is their own document that people subscribe, small subscription fee that actually also gets mailed to people's homes.
Okay. I don't know if we get those as trustees than gratis or so. I started receiving them after I was elected, or I just made a really good impression when I went over to the senior center, maybe. I don't.
Maybe they thought you were old.
I do, I do get my, my father's stuff from, for retirement. So yes. I was going to say, it, it felt like there was probably a little bit of overlap between those two documents, but that document comes more frequently. So as long as it doesn't impact that one, Nyla, I think you're still going to have, I, I think you're just trying to politely say our elder residents when you're seeing people who rely on the, the paper version, or are you also talking about like income?
I'm also talking income.
Okay. Yeah. Okay. That's fair. Then yeah, then WNC and food pantry would definitely cover that.
Great idea.
And so I, just to, to clarify, because I was trying to read through here. We will have an option. It's going to be presented somewhere that we can sign up to receive it electronically, or are we just going to rely on like social media alerts to say this is available now?
So we have access to a really nice array of different emailing lists. So the village center has our own, the library has one, police department does a newsletter. So there are a lot of already existing opportunities. We also have the ability to notice people through the utilities. Even if you don't get a paper utility bill, you do get the attachments in your email bill that you get. And so we're going to use all of those resources to reach out plus social media. So we're, we're going to hit every corner that we can think of to make sure people know it's coming.
Thank you.
Joe? Tricia or Sam?
My only concern would be that we, not everyone has internet access at home. So this makes it difficult. So that we have special efforts for low income people at some of the locations that we've provided. Also, in other places and other communities I've worked with, we've partnered with the school district to use the parent portal. That would certainly hit a lot of the people that are interested in those children's classes. And I know sometimes that's a negotiation to get access to that, but I would be happy to help facilitate a conversation because that would certainly get at least people into the groove about looking online and not expecting it in their mailboxes. So with that, any other discussion?
No, none. Do we have a motion?
I will move to approve the two-year contract with American Solutions for Business slash American Diversity for the redesign of the Horizons publication.
Second.
All right. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor?
I.
Opposed? All right. Motion carries. Thank you very much. Next item on the list, discuss and take action on resolution of Wanakee area emergency medical service district agreement, creating EMS district. Number four. So I assume Todd or Tim or straight to you, Robert?
I think it's mine. Unless somebody, staff really cared. Okay. Nobody likes to talk about EMS staff. So I, as I discussed last time, we, we've included in the packet the copy of the district's agreement that we updated as a committee over for the EMS district. I'm going to say that this is not the last time, I, I said this last time, I repeat this time, if, if all the changes in here are, if you're expected to see more changes, we have not finished having conversations, but we did after some lively conversations earlier this summer, came to a common ground on quite a few items. So just highlights that I would hit in here, we did, we did clean up a lot of the language as related to terms, since it was still going off of the original 1978 agreement. Just to indicate that, and I'm not going to go line by line, but just to hit the highlights that we do, we are now leaving back to municipalities to determine the terms of their representatives. We wanted to make sure that substitutes were allowed. We were already doing substitutes in there anyway. So this is just codifying it. And we removed the $5 commission that it turns out towns get, towns do pay their, their members to come to the commission, but villages do not. So village of Dane and village of Wanakee, we, we felt a little stiffed by this, but we, we moved on. We did talk about how we, how we could prove, appoint a chair if the chair is not available. We made sure that we were just talking about who's treasurer and secretary. Just so again, we're just, a lot of this is aligning it with what the fire districts agreement also has as well, if that language looks familiar to you. We wanted to define what special meetings were, since they were kind of mixed in with regular meetings. Updated our accounting so that it's now reflecting GAAP and some other specific language that I'm not an accountant, that Renee knows much better than me, but everybody agreed we should have that. We did define an annual meeting, so we are now going to have an annual meeting in the month of October, starting next year after this takes place. So that'll give the public a greater opportunity to weigh in on the budgeting process for the, the district over there. And we did also update, there was a, there was an issue with the voting that basically one community could stop any expense over a thousand dollars from being paid by the district if they objected. So we removed that to go back to a simple majority vote. And we raised the values to $10,000 to reflect the considerable amount of inflation that's occurred since the 1970s. We did not touch on the, how a chair is appointed. We did not touch on how our bylaws would be enforced, as I indicated last time. Some of the towns apparently do not follow Robert's rules of order. In fact, their council head told them that they should not follow Robert's rules of order. Brian, you might enjoy this because it might be too confusing if a, if a town supervisor who is not aware of how Robert's rules work were to attend this meeting as a substitute and may do something wrong. So if you have some advice for me off the record, I would.
Yeah. I mean, I'm going to be honest with you. I'm not the biggest fan of Robert's rules for myself. So I think it's always better to just be practical during meetings. But that being said, while I'm not a big fan of it, it also is positive, I think, to have it as a backstop. Which then I think would be consistent with, you know, what, what I think you, you've discussed at the committee meetings, we got to have some procedural backstop, notwithstanding the fact that maybe we'll operate a certain way during meetings.
Right. And we do something that I would call as we, we pick and choose from it, what we like to follow right now. And it actually, there's a few of the districts, this is actually one where we did not agree in that some of the districts actually said, yes, we should follow Robert's rules. So Westport also felt about that as well. And it was really, I believe Springfield that strongly objected to it. So these are things that we're going to still discuss, probably starting this Thursday. But to that end, we did pass this as a committee. It's already been signed. So it's just awaiting passage from each municipality, which we expect is, I believe we may be the last municipality to vote on this, but I haven't heard that anybody else has objected to it. So I would be looking for, after discussion, a motion in order to approve these changes so that we can return it and ratify it at the district level.
Right. Thank you, Robert. And what questions do we have or comments do we have?
I have none other than thank you, Robert, for your drive in getting this done.
At $5 a meeting, how much do we owe you?
Me? You would only owe me about $25. I feel like you might have some former trustees that would call and say, hey, wait a minute here.
Back pay plus interest. Money. So, yeah, that's like a pizza. So I don't know. I don't know.
Five, $5 back in late seventies probably got you like a whole meal out somewhere after that meeting was over.
Yeah, at more than McDonald's. Yeah. At O'Malley's Farm Cafe. Sad that it's not here. So seeing other discussion, I would move to approve the resolution of the Wanakee area emergency medical service district agreement, creating the EMS district.
I'll second that.
All right. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor?
I.
I oppose. Motion carries. All right. Next item on the agenda, discuss and take action on proposed 2024 operating and capital improvement budget. And before, does anybody need a break? Anything? We're at two and a half hours in. No? All right. Good. Yeah. Yeah. Okay. Let's take a five minute break. Is that all right?
Yeah, sure.
Yeah. All right. All right. I think we're at five minutes. I'll call the meeting back to order. Okay. Item number six, or item number five, discuss and take action on proposed 2024 operating and capital improvement budget. Renee, is that you?
Well, so this is really just the spot in the agenda where you can have discussion either about what was that public comment or other things that you've thought of since the last meeting. So that I can put those forth in the final draft that will appear on the November 20th in that packet. So there's not really, you know, I already gave the presentation, so it would just be if you wanted to discuss particular items.
All right.
Or ask questions.
Thank you. So particular items or questions? What do we have? Anything?
I just want to thank you for doing, putting the math out there and doing it, for advancing the maintenance facilities person up. That was, that was not as painful as the numbers I thought it was going to be. So that was good. And the offset, obviously, on there. I did want to make a, address. I was, I was thinking after the, the public comments about what to do with the ARPA funds. And I know that we maybe have some designs for sustainability and things like that that have come up tonight, but as well for the nonprofits. I, since I honestly don't remember when ARPA came out and how the nonprofits were dressed, did, did they reach out to us or did we just say to the community like this is available? Does anybody remember how that worked?
I would, I would say that I initiated discussions with the organizations.
But they did put forward formal requests.
Right. And ask specifically what they felt, and this is perfectly in line with what ARPA was for. What were the people you're serving facing amidst the pandemic that that funds could help you address? And they gave thoughtful proposals to that specific question. And that's how we base the amount of ARPA forwards who we supported each of them.
And do we know, I didn't know that WNC hadn't used all of their initial or only grant that we've given them. Is that a function of the turnover and executive leadership there or is it?
And they may have at this time of the year, they only report to me at the end of the year. So I don't know what they have used in 2023. But they had the four years to use it. So I think it's partially a function of the restrictions that were on those initial funds. It was specifically for the neighbor to neighbor program. And people had to be Wanakee residents. And so they have to do a calculation. They have to, you know, meet all the criteria of the, you know, there's certain income criterias and things like that. So they put together a document. The last I knew they hadn't used it, I'm hopeful that they have used the rest of it in 2023, but they would have until 2024 to do that as well.
I serve as our liaison to the WNC board, and I believe they've depleted their neighbor to neighbor fund. So I'm pretty sure the answer to that question is.
Yeah. So when they report to me for this year, they probably, you know, we gave them all the money upfront versus the food pantry had to file claims with us. It was different agreements. But they just have to substantiate that. Otherwise they would have to repay it at the end of 2024. So I'll be looking for, you know, their final substantiations, I guess.
Okay. So and then there's nothing, because the ARPA funds are, are more liquid, there's nothing that requires us to take action. there's nothing that requires us to take action with the annual budget. If, if we wanted to do something next year, as we're counting down the days until we have to assign out these funds, if, if they did run out and they come back to us, then we could, we can handle this next year.
Correct, yes, these were just sort of suggested items, um, so we could have more of a discussion. And again, we just want to make sure that we're spending them timely, I don't, we can't wait till the end to figure it out, so, um, yes, there, there'd be opportunities. Um, and one thing I didn't really factor into this, you know, two hundred and eighty-three thousand that I had projected. Um, we do have some interest income that is in there, we don't know, um, there's some twenty twenty three things that may be coming in under previous budgets, so, you know, we'll know more on the dollars as we, um, continue into twenty twenty four, but these were just some suggestions.
Okay. Um, I, I kind of want to make this like, this feels weird to make because there's no audience here, but that probably cares about this, but I have had some, uh, questions about allocating more, if we would allocate more funds for trees. Um, and I kind of asked about this at Parks and Rec and I, uh, I, Bill was kind enough to, to give me the math behind this, so that I understand it, and I had some conversation with them. And, um, it's for, for any of the public who happens to hear this, uh, that can, that cares about planting trees, uh, is that, uh, if we plant too many too fast, we're going to have a, a large tree turnover, so to speak, in twenty years, that could be pretty costly. Um, and that also, we have kind of hit a limit with the amount of, uh, labor available to plant the trees if we did increase the amount. So we're at a good sweet spot right now, so, uh, I, I think we've all probably received emails at some point from various members of the community. But, uh, we're, it, it sounds like we're going in a, in a good, efficient clip that is more healthy for our tree canopy as opposed to, uh, just rushing out and getting a lot of trees in there, so, uh, not going to ask that we put additional funds in, you know, for additional trees at this time.
Joe?
Well, to follow up on trees, I was very happy to see the additional trimming in there. There's a lot of places in the village where it's in need.
Ditto, uh, ditto about both tree questions. Um, I, uh, do you think it's a good idea to see how we can better support or throw more support behind the neighborhood connection and the food pantry in particular, particularly since the, um, uh, dollars, uh, towards public support of households in need of food have really dwindled, um, this past year. That cut off, I'm drawing a blank on the, um, specific name in Wisconsin of the program. Um, but the dollars we're allocating towards people who are food insecure nationwide is really down. Um, one of the things I would like us to do, though, if we're thinking of doing that, is look at, um, you know, maybe it comes out about ARPA dollars. Uh, maybe it comes after the budget is passed, but if we could have a conversation perhaps with the food pantry about what they need. Um, and, and, um, a nice round dollar amount on the one hand is great, on the other hand, I'd really like to see if we can have a conversation about what does need look like within the food pantry right now? Um, what types of increases are they seeing, are there specific things that we could be doing to support them more? Maybe not, it's, maybe it's not just dollars, but there are other things that they need as well. Um, so those are my, basically my two comments. Other than that, um, uh, the meetings we had in the run up to the preparation for the budget and everything, I just want to thank you for all the work you've done. Renee and everyone else on the staff, this is an enormous project. Um, and every time I open it up and I look at just little tweaks, I'm, I am beginning to understand just how much work is involved in putting together something that looks very elegant when we see it and, uh, very concise, um, in the presentation of it, so thank you for that. Sam?
Uh, well, I wa, I wasn't there, uh, last time, uh, you know, the only thing I was going to say is, uh, moving up the, uh, Buildings and Facilities Manager, which was already done. Um, definitely, I think it'd be good for the food pantry to be in here, you know, we had the WNC person for a presentation, probably would be good to have Kathy in here. Or Cheryl, or whoever they want to send, anyway.
Thank you, Sam.
Um, no, the only thing I was going to say, just, um, given some of the conversations about where we could allocate more resources is, um, the grant program that was announced by Evers today for the fifty million dollars, I think some of the things that we have earmarked could be good candidates for that. And I think the, um, and so if we were able to somehow secure some of that grant funding, then kind of redirect sources. So I'm even, I think both, probably the police station and maybe the splash pad could be eligible projects based on what they're focused on. Maybe you already know Todd or not. Okay, sounds good. Just thinking through that.
Um, I want to echo the thank you that Kristen gave the staff and Renee. It is very much appreciated what everyone has done. And I, I would also like to have the discussion with the food pantry and WNC to find out what their specific needs are, and, um, it may not be just dollars, there may be other things, so I think if we have the discussion, then we can, uh, go on in the future and make decisions pertaining to funds for them, thanks.
Joe, yes.
Uh, well, we have the chief here, I'm just, uh, curious if there are any places that you felt in the, uh, police budget that there may be opportunities yet? I, I know staffing is a big deal and that's probably a yeah, a component that is, is, um, outside of the budget, so, okay, thank you.
All right, so, uh, there's no motion needed for this, um, just our sincere thanks for all of the work that has gone into it. Thank you. All right, item number six, discuss and take action on extension of twelve month employee recruitment and retention strategy. Todd, I believe it's you.
It's about a year ago, we were having this conversation, it probably feels somewhat fresh still. Um, and certainly it to the department heads in the room, they know that this has been a very useful, uh, and well implemented strategy across our organization. No single department went untouched, no single employee, frankly, as I think back to the bonus, bonuses that we gave last year was untouched and not, um, and, and was impacted by this. So, uh, a lot of what the strategy did in terms of giving some administrative authority for sort of more, um, more urgent staffing, hiring decisions, opportunistic moments to, let's say, counter someone's offer. Uh, are still valid concerns for us as department managers here with the village, so, um, I had a really noble goal of having, uh, brought forward to you and received approval for a, a robust updated employee handbook, which is still in the midst of process. It's a, that's a big project, and the thought was that some of the things that we had in the retention strategy, we're going to make absolute sense to, to continue forward within permanent practice. And I was going to be recommending some of those adjustments for, to be in the handbook, which would have taken away the need for me to come back and say, hey, um, the strategy that we approved, can we extend that because these situations are still not much has changed in the job marketplace for our recruitment and retention. So, but I'm here asking that today, asking that you would grant an extension um, of these provisions, except the, the, um, retention bonus that you approved in twenty twenty-two, I'm not requesting that here for twenty twenty-three. Um, but the other provisions of that strategy, which I'm happy to answer questions about, I'd like to ask that you approve an extension. Uh, let's see, check my motion here. Through twenty twenty-four or until employee handbook adjustments are approved, that would make the strategy unnecessary. So that's the request on behalf of administration.
All right, thank you, what questions or comments do we have? Any, Nyla?
How soon do you think the handbook would be finished?
Uh, I would say by the end of first quarter.
Thank you.
Any others?
Motion to approve extending the recruitment and retention strategy through twenty twenty-four or until employee handbook adjustments are approved that would make the strategy unnecessary, noting that this approval does not include a twenty twenty-three employee bonus.
Second. All right, any discussion on the motion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. All right, item number seven, discuss and take action on issuance of a municipal revenue obligation and resolution for Welch Enterprises LLC.
Uh, thanks, Kristen, yes, uh, site plan and development agreement were previously approved for a development project at ten twenty Prairie View Court, that being for a newcomer supply. Uh, pursuant to the terms of that development agreement, the village is to issue an MRO to the developer within thirty days of execution of the agreement. Uh, I can report that agreement was executed by both parties on October thirtieth. Just one thing to quickly point out, and I see this on the cover sheet, mea culpa. Um, there's a statement says village board approved development agreement with Welch Enterprise on ten sixteen twenty-two, that was actually the previous uh, village board meeting, so that was ten sixteen twenty-three, um, that's the only, uh, minor change there. But staff is recommending approval of the resolution to issue the MRO.
Right, any discussion?
I just want to have clarification. We really don't have a choice here, correct?
Correct.
We have, essentially, we've already.
We've already contractually obligated ourselves to.
Okay.
Nyla?
Yeah, that's a point that I would like to make, the same as I did at the previous meeting pertaining to, uh, paying up the financial obligation for a TIF. Um, I do not support the TIF, but at, I think my responsibility is to see to it that financial obligations of the village are met, and so that will determine how I'm voting.
Thank you, Nyla, other comments or questions?
I had one question, and of course now I can't find it in, in here, we had the math breakout on the repayment period. That was that was granted to them, and it didn't seem to add up to a round number.
Are you looking at page one sixty-eight, is that where your folk?
I, I'm getting there eventually, there we go, yes, thank you, um, yeah, it's, since it's.
So this is, you know, I would say this, these numbers are estimates, um, L, they're based on numbers that Ellis puts together, Ellis is typically very conservative. In other words, the, the payment that we would make to them would be capped at two million dollars. If these numbers are actually correct, they would receive less than the two million, which is always the benefit of the pay-go concept for us. So, the, yeah, the one point eight number is less than the two million, and so if this were to happen, we would only pay him one point eight as opposed to two. Um, but I would also just note that Ellis' numbers are usually very conservative, municipalities want Ellis' numbers to be conservative. And so these are just estimates, though.
Okay, I, I think it's a case of banker brain, I was trying to read it like an amortization schedule, so I was just kind of confused why it didn't add up, thank you for clarifying.
All right, any other questions or comments? All right, seeing none, I will move to approve the resolution authorizing the issuance of the municipal revenue obligation to Welch Enterprise LLC. I'll second that, all right, any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. All right, item number eight, presentation and discussion regarding the implementation of onboard GOV.
That's me.
Finally.
Oh, right, I waited all meeting to talk, no. Um, so I'm really pleased to tell you guys that we're making improvements on the committees, boards and commissions, making it more transparent, so Jared is going to bring up our website. Um, and a few things, that's okay, no problem.
And what he's showing is the live, the current live version, right, of the?
Correct, correct. Um, the, just the background on it, as I said in my memo, um, this subscription was purchased in twenty eighteen and the intention was for it to help better track the committees, boards and commissions. Um, show the terms and, and that kind of thing. So I'm not sure the extent, but the extent I would like to use it for is consistency of information. Before we were changing it in at least three different locations via spreadsheets, it's very easy to make transparency errors, human errors, um, so now we change it in one spot and it automatically is on the website instantly. So the committee members that were approved tonight will be on the website tomorrow. Um, it's that easy. So we also are, a- as you might recall, there is, uh, application issue back in April. This, we're going to have an application button on each one of these pages, so Jared, if you would just go down to the, um, just pick a committee. To, yep, perfect, so, um, this tells all about the committees, and then down below it has the members, their expiration terms, um, and then in the lower left corner, come December, it's going to have an application button, and so you can apply right from the website instead of going to a separate module, changing, and it'll all be in one location, we'll be able to pull reports, um, send them to board members and such, so that'll streamline that process.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
For those who don't want to do an online application, can they bring in a paper application?
We will have, um, we will have paper applications, we'll just have to enter them just so they are streamlined into the, the same system.
Thank you.
Yep.
We're going to touch on contact information, or can I?
You can.
Okay.
But I just want to make sure that I get my last point across. And it's, it's just more or less about transparency, so we want to make sure that the public has access. Um, this is a lot easier, I think, than having a spreadsheet, um, that we would email out to people, it's readily accessible at any time, so now it's your turn.
She's donated a lot of work on this, uh, and she, more than anyone else, was convinced that we were going to have a really successful showing of our rolling out of committee appointment, availability, openings, and that whole process for, that, that you're going to see take place in the next thirty, four, five months, so, uh, light years move forward, so, uh, thank you for the work you've done, and I know there's other team members that have been a part of it. So Jared, if you just switch back to the first committee page, uh, no, 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 yep, the other tab. So just, you know, when you, when you click on any one of these committees, it's going to take you outside of our web system into the, into the other page, we've got our logo there, so you see it, but that'll take you right to the, um, right to the, the committee. Now, um, you can go back into the committee, Jared. What I want to talk about briefly is, um, actually something that the village board brought up about a year ago for me. Um, as a, a, a wish for this year is to come up with a solution to emails for committee members. First of all, this is the place where we're going to have all that contact information worked out, so if you scroll down, Jared, and you click on, on, on any one member, um, pick, pick Tricia first. As a trustee, um, you, you don't have a choice, we're going to have your contact information right there, uh, on the screen. I think phone numbers are supposed to be there too, I thought.
We haven't figured that out.
We're working on it. Um, but certainly your village email, now if you go back and click on, say, Aldasau. Um, you're not, you don't see the contact information yet. We have looked carefully at the option of getting a wanakee.com email for every member of every body. As you know, there's fifteen plus bodies, there's numerous committee members on each body, not only does that, do those people change from time to time, but there are, even within our own workforce, the administration of emails with the frequency of, um, password, uh, I forgot my password. Um, to the, um, the challenge of open, uh, open records management and so on. Uh, it is a big task for us as staff to, to even manage that for our own, our own, um, employees. The thought of, um, you know, very part-time committee member, use an application of a wanakee.com address seems like, it seems like a large undertaking for a, what might be, um, a minimal, minimal gain. Um, we've done, we've been, looked carefully at how to do it, there's, can we do it? Yes, are we concerned about the administration of making that continue to work year after year for the changes in those appointments year after year? We think that's going to be difficult for us and for the end users potentially. Um, we've done some research and we're, we're kind of like, well, have other cities figure this out? And, um, to the best of our research around our region, um, most often committee members, um, uh, are only listed by name. There are others where they have name and contacts and emails, but in all those cases, the emails are a personal account of the. There are others where they have name and contacts and emails, but in all those cases, the emails are a personal account of the committee member. It's been rare to find a community that has also had all of the emails for all of the citizen members. Because my my suspicion is those committee members wish not for. Their email to be shown. Or wish not to use email at all for official work. Related to the organization because of public record law issues.
As a committee member, you absolutely should want to have. An email address. Of your community, because if you use your personal, now your personal emails become subject to discovery in the public records.
Well, but we we found no, we found no community. There's a list. And the the reason, the reasons you don't have that is the same reasons that I talked about at the start of the conversation here. That that is, that is a, uh, a tricky undertaking that's going to be wrought with administrative challenge year after year. And, uh. So what we would like to do is work with. What we've done in the past with committees is suggest to members that they may wish to create a personal account. They're, they're free all over the place. You can pick Yahoo or you can pick a Gmail or what have you. To establish and use, create on their own fruition and use solely for the purpose. Of their service on that committee or commissioner board, which we could then include as contact information. I'm watching, I'm watching Brian's, uh, manipulating smirk.
Everybody should have one key mail addresses. That makes it easier for us to be able to respond when we get a public records request. We don't even need to talk to that individual because as long as they're only using. Their wannakee email address, then we have the ability to do the analysis ourselves, but. I I lose that.
And like, like I said, we we have looked in and looked into that and we can set it up. There's a cost associated with every. Wannakee wannakee.com address, I think, what is it, twelve bucks a month? There's twelve bucks a month per email. Per unique email on wannakee.com. So.
Can can I, can I make a suggestion? That you brought this up and maybe this will mollify Brian as well, because I'm with you, by the way. They should have an at wannakee address. Have we, I've seen in other communities that it's not personalized to the member. It's just, you know. Plan Commission one, Plan Commission two. Sorry, I'm stealing other people's thunder, but like that way. It's reusable and just when they're done with their term, you you control the ability to lock them out of the account. When they're done and then just goes, oh, Carlos smiled and really wiped her.
Well, because I I know that that is a highly. A ta- a task that takes a lot of time. When you have members that change after a month, you know, if somebody drops off the committee. That's another change that you're having to make, get a new address or not a new address. You have to lock that, change that password, reissue it. And and that's a lot of maintenance of just committee members that would be a pretty big undertaking for. Us currently.
Can we set at a policy level that it's just some committees that we don't, that they just don't need, I mean, I. I'm not going to pick on anyone, but I I pulled up Wannaboom, which has fourteen members and one of them, only one is a trustee, so that would be thirteen email addresses and. Would we really need to give Wannaboom their own e- members their own email address? Like, that seems.
Or Board of Appeals.
Or, yeah, yeah, it's like ones that barely meet. So I feel like we could isolate it down to a very limited number that would reduce. Burden.
I guess my personal opinion, and you can take this or leave this, but consistency is really nice when it comes to keeping track of that many different committees. On a basis of. This committee has emails. Well, this one doesn't. This one has phone numbers. Well, this one doesn't. So to that. I like to, uh, I just think it's, and it's also it's less explanation to, um, residents why some committees have. Village emails and why others don't, you know, it's a little bit.
What, so, and I may be getting off track or on track. At work, when I get a information request, they pull it before they tell me. So bye-bye all emails that are relevant to the request. Then then they follow, our attorney follows up and says, we've had a request and here's what it's about. We'd like to talk with you. So are we right? I assume right now we're not able to do that outside of the trustees?
We're not, but we have to, if that situation arises and there's emails that are requested, we reach out to that. Member of that committee and ask them if they've had any communications electronically. And get the records that way.
Okay.
And if they say no, there's no records, then we don't, you know, we don't have a way to.
Verify that.
Verify that.
Do we, what would it, do we know, are there services that could administer email for us? I mean, for this, um, that would take the burden off staff?
Um, we've, we've looked at, there are probably some web-based solutions for municipal website development. That has form-based communications, but that. Really is, ends up being a one-way messaging, not the opportunity for the committee member to respond back. So there's still an email in the background of all that. I I mean, so like Robert, to your, to your question earlier, right off the page jumps Plan Commission. Right? Plan Commissioner one through, well, five, five citizen members? Right?
Four.
Four, four citizen members. Plan Commissioner one through four. Is that, is that doable? I think that's doable is if there is any one body that has, that has. More potential exposure related to open records requests. Probably fair to say it's Plan Commission, right, Brian?
And and in light of the powers that have been transitioned from the Plan Commission to the CDA, I'd say CDA too. Just to come to mind are Plan Commission, CDA, and potentially Finance. Those are the ones that jump out to me.
I I was just trying to take a risk-based approach here and just say, you know, focus on the ones that you regularly get requests for and then. Everyone else we can just deal with as we've been dealing with it. I know that that doesn't go with your consistency requests, but I'm.
That was just my personal opinion.
No, I respect it because you're the one who's got to do the work when the request comes in. So it's one thing for us to say it and not actually have to be the ones that that do it, but. I'm just trying to think of a way that would. Just go after the area that we have the most exposure on, that's all.
I know this doesn't solve all solutions, but there's always the opportunity for any constituent to reach out to us and have us pass a message on. To the, that board, that committee member. We can do that. We have a record then in our system of what was given to them. I mean. It's not a perfect world, but that's very common.
Okay, that was my question is, um, how was information passed from a communication that you received to a committee member?
So Todd, I mean, you could probably speak to this too, but I know Todd has received communications where people request that this be presented to the village board. And he then emails all of you all blank carpet copied, most likely.
But if the committee members don't have an email, how was it passed to them? I'm talking, I'm talking about, you know, Parks Committee, um, Planning Commission, how, how do those members, the CDA? How do those members receive the communication?
We, we have their emails.
Yeah.
And, uh, whether it's a village email, which will only be the case to trustees, um, all others with their own personal email. And we forward it on to their email addresses.
Other questions or comments?
I was just going to make another suggestion, kind of a different format, but it's to your point, Carla forwarding it on for the contact information. You know, even having a general, just, um, plan commission at wannakee.com that comes to whoever administers that board. Whoever serves as that, and then they pass through the information just so it doesn't, it does have a specific. Email for people to reach out to the teams, but it's, it doesn't ever change. It just goes right to that person.
That's a good suggestion. We did discuss that with our IT consultant.
To have a, like. This, this, this button to send a message to the entirety of a given body.
Either that or to, like, whoever administers, so like this would go to Carl if it were for something, I don't.
That's what I mean. The one email, the email would be promoted on our website as the way to contact the entirety of the given body.
Just to make sure we're clear, though, not, the entire body would not have access to that email for the purpose of walking quorums.
No.
Yeah. Right.
Yeah, I mean, we're gonna. I, just in light of the discussion tonight, there's probably some things that we can talk about at a staff level of how to. If if we're not going to get essentially wannakee email addresses for different committee members. There's different things that we can maybe. Almost, I mean, well, here, one example would be, look, if you want to be on a committee, you, you are going to establish a. Uh, a wannakee Gmail address. And as, as a member of the committee, you are agreeing that you will only utilize. That wannakee Gmail address for your governmental business. And I'm picking Gmail, it could be Yahoo or something. At least in some way, shape, or form to get it narrowed down, so we know exactly what needs to be looked at when we get a public records request or we have discovery. And that would also then protect, I mean, I've, I've been on committees, not governmental committees, but, but, but charity committees, and it's like. You know, I, they, they, they established a Gmail address for me and they said, we're going to utilize this Gmail address for you. And I said, that's fantastic. I'd never had a Gmail address before. I'd only had work. And it's like, okay, that's the one that I'm going to utilize now. Because as a committee member, you do not want people getting into your personal email addresses. And if you're able to demonstrate that this is the only one that you're using for government, I mean, it's better if it's wannakee because. You guys are talking about the administrative hassles and I do not dispute these on the front end. I'm thinking about the administrative hassles on the back end when we get the request. If we can't have wannakee Gmail addresses, at least establish a specific Gmail or Yahoo or whatever for each member, so at least we have some control. And and know exactly where, and then it's going to be, look, you are getting, you know, then we know with the committee member, well, I know that you're getting. Governmental, you know, emails to this address because we're sending them to you. And so just make sure that you don't use different email addresses for.
I'm playing to your hand, though, Brian, a little bit here, because, and this is why this is such a tricky, complicated thing and. Barely shall you find a city to have figured this out. But, uh. When that committee member is done with service and they have that Gmail account and are no longer serving. There's still an obligation for that record to be.
Right, we have an obligation to maintain it and there, and and I'm not saying that there's any evil intent on their part, but now they've just moved on and they just don't have the. The interest in making sure that it's properly maintained, which again is another benefit of. And I appreciate there's a cost associated with it too, but another benefit of having wannakee.
This is similar to about five internal meetings we've had over the past year to try to figure this out.
Can we make them assign the account or ask them to assign the Gmail account to us afterwards? So I have a Gmail account, Chris Rungy at wannakee dot gmail dot com, whatever. Um, and then I get done with my service and I give you, Carla, my password. And that way we are not maintaining the account or fixing passwords or anything when those are going on while they're serving. But afterwards, we have access to their, their emails as records.
Or or we simply download the entirety of their email record.
Even better.
From that account and then they can get rid of it.
Yeah, because I think we, because we never, we have no idea what's going to happen with Google, you know, I mean. We assume it's going to be there, but at the end of the day, the maintenance requires are, are ours. They're not Google's, so.
I, I have a question. This may sound like it, it wouldn't happen, but I want to ask the question. Are we going to eliminate people from being able to be on committees because in the event that they don't have an email or don't have access to it? Or what are we going to do there? Because there are people out there who may want to serve on a committee. Who don't have access and they don't want it.
That actually makes it easier. Because then we don't have to worry about maintaining email addresses for them and whether, then it's just, hey. Here's a copy of the document that you need to have. We retain a copy ourselves. We maintain it. We don't. It actually was easier before email.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
So on our website, we especially welcome applications from people who don't want email. And we've gotten it. This has been a robust discussion about email. I don't know that we're done, but I do want to pause and say thank you so much for, this was a huge lift. This is amazing.
Everybody enjoys it, and if they have suggestions, we're open to it. The problem about the contact information for. Um, committee members' phone numbers to be up there. If it's up for one, it's going to be up for everybody because it's the way the field in the program is created. So that's the part I'm having a hard time figuring out how we can mask that. And that's why out of the eleven communities that we looked at in. Around us, one community has people's personal phone numbers and their personal emails. Otherwise. It's just the chair of the committee that has an email and possibly a phone number that's assigned to them, as well as the staff members.
What I really wanted to, you didn't know is that while this is alive. You may be clicking on names and seeing that contact information empty and you may be frustrated about it. And that I want, so I wanted to have this discussion about the challenge we're having internally to, to try and figure this all out. And we're still working on it.
This is really great. And I, from the spring when you and I sat down and we were like, wow, there's like four different systems and, you know.
We're not going to have struggles.
This was, well, you did a tremendous job this spring getting that all together, but, you know, we've got decades of. Records and different systems and different technologies that this all seems to wrap up very nicely. So thank you. Very, very, very much.
We even discovered terms. Terms for members who we didn't know who had what term and.
Yeah.
There are some complications. Anyway.
Yeah.
All, it's all sorted out and going forward, we're, we're really glad about, um, what's ahead of us for the process.
So.
Other questions, comments?
Yeah, in light of lots of years of things and everything being sorted out, if there's incorrect history.
We, going forward, we can have the history, but what was put in the system prior? And that's not to the previous clerks. Previous two clerks credit. It's a matter of, I'm not sure who is changing. There, you know, we've had access to several different people.
So if it's incorrect, it's incorrect.
Incorrect. I can, I can go back and change the history. But it's been very difficult to find some history of Utility Commission members and when they were.
And I don't think we can turn that off in the system necessarily.
And turn off the history, but then you're not going to see the terms.
Oh, yeah.
And we want the terms up there.
It's all good.
But I'm willing to change anybody's history.
Sweet, you can change history.
We've got some things. All right, um, any other discussions or comments?
Yeah, I I just wanted, um. For, uh. Committees that we don't have on there, like EMS and FIRE districts. Is there any way to put who that trustee is going to end up being? It's, right now it's me, but in the future, obviously it'd be somebody else, so.
We can add whatever committees we want. We can take away whatever committees we want. We can have them show or not show.
Okay.
Um, so it's just a matter of.
Except that those aren't our committees.
No, I know they're not, but I I'm just thinking of a way for a constituent to know if they're looking up the trustees.
When you see, the trustees also have their own, um, I don't know if you call them landing pages. Is that correct? Their profile pages to show like their, their, um, picture. Um, their profile picture as well as in their contact information, I believe is on there as well. So as you see that. So that's for each of the trustees to keep a a landing page for each one of them or a.
Oh, so we're maintaining that page still.
We are maintaining that, but then also if they click on another spot where it says Board of Trustees, they're going to get the same modular page. For each committee, just so they can see terms.
Are you saying those, that shows who's on, who's serving on EMS or FIRE? My, my initial thought to that, it's, it's the FIRE Commission's, it's the FIRE Department's committee. It's the EMS Department's committee. It is on. My perspective, it is on them in administrated, administering their function to present the information about their. Appointed bodies to those whom they serve. And we've, we've tried to help sometimes in interplay there. And then I found that we've also been blamed when it's not shown right, when it's not our fault. So. I'm willing to work, you're helping serve on both, Nyla, you're on FIRE. I'm willing to talk about how I can find the right. Mid-middle space to get that information communicated. Does that make sense? How it's been kind of funky in the past?
Yeah, because I was also thinking WDIR for Tricia as well. So I, I, um, and to your point, though, uh. The the rub there is that we do put the FIRE district on on base. Their meetings do get put on on base, so.
EMS also, I believe, is put in on base.
Is it?
Minute, they're not their minutes, but their meeting agendas are put.
But I mean, I know they also maintain on their respective websites. They have it on there as well. So I'm just. I'm thinking if I'm just a constituents on there, it's like, who the heck represents me at FIRE? It's like, it can be a little confusing.
Historically, we haven't had that, but we can.
Also to have the meeting dates for FIRE and EMS. And all that information on there.
That does get put on the website.
Okay.
When there's an agenda. So we have to physically, it's a, we go in and create a meeting. Based on when we receive an agenda and then post that. based on when we receive an agenda and then post that and publish it. So people see it on the website.
We do need to be careful that we are not the official.
We are not.
You know, so I mean, we have, we need to have the caveat of, basically this is the one that we're aware of, but it's those entities that then if they want to change their agendas within, you know, theoretically twenty-four hours. I mean, just people need to understand that we are not the be all, end all for those agendas.
I'm, I'm just trying to cut the loop.
Oh, no. Yeah, I get it. It's just, and, and I think it makes sense to do what we've done. People, the public just needs to understand that we're not the ultimate authority on that agenda.
They're at very least, you know, on, on the profile, just, you know, list under Roberts, oh, he's on the, you know, EMS commission, because I don't think we've updated the new ones with what people are on yet. And then you know, update the hyperlink so they go into the onboard, you know, simple fix, but that would help.
So the committees that you serve on, you'd like to see that on your profile.
Right, because mine are already in there. The hyperlinks just go to the old thing.
So instead of them going to the committee page to see the trustee that's listed, you'd like to see it on your profile.
Well, my profile, well, and, well, what I'm saying is like, in addition, if somebody's looking at, well, Jared could pull up, you could pull up profiles. You could pull up mine as an example. So it's got the links there, but right now they're dead because they don't jump into the onboard like it does on the side. So pretty much just jumping it so it goes to the same place.
Got it. I just want to be sure that I'm consistent when we have to change it in multiple places that we're not missing something. So the more we streamline it into one location to have it changed is, is the goal I was going for, but we can, we can update those.
Yeah. Tricia and I are still to be determined if you go on our pages. So I'm not, that was not a, but I did, I actually did get a constituent email asking me like, what, what do you serve on? And I was like, it should be on the, oh, it's not on there. So I, that's why I was thinking about firing EMS though, because we wouldn't put that on there under the current system, which is fine. We could put on there as a, is it's just, it's not a hyperlink. It's just a, you know, serves on that. That's it. That's fine.
All right. Other questions or comments? Other than a big hearty thank you for doing all of this. Um, it's huge. So. Wow. All right. Should we hang out longer?
I will second.
All in favor?
Aye.